Gloria Gonzalez-Stelacchia, here. Anna Smith, here. Christine Mauer, here. Trish Bodie. Shadé Fashakun, here. Francesca Romans, here. Paul Goutier.
Good evening. It is 6:16 PM and with the quorum of the board present, I call this meeting of the Leander ISD Board of Trustees to order. First, we're going to start with our student pledge, and it's my pleasure to welcome Cadet Technical Sergeant Madison Gilstrap to lead the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge. Madison is an 11th grade student at Leander High School and the daughter of Eric and Holly Gilstrap. As an Air Force Junior ROTC Flight Chief, Madison is responsible for over 60 cadets. In her free time, she enjoys training her dog and aspires to be a military-working dog handler and a service dog handler. Well done, Cadet Gilstrap. Thank you.
Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Cadet Technical Sergeant Madison Gilstrap. If we all can, please give her a round of applause. Thank you. Next, we're going to move to the Spotlight on Learning. We are excited to hear from a few of our Tarvin Elementary School students and staff members. Welcome, Tarvin Elementary.
Good evening. Madam President, School Board, Dr. Gearing, thank you so much for having Tarvin out to spotlight some of our learning. We are super excited to be here and share some of the things that are happening on our campus. We're so proud to be Trailblazers and can't wait for our youngest Trailblazers to showcase their learning as well. Tarvin opened up four years ago under Kristi Hillman with a vision that all Trailblazers would leave with the Tarvin Learner Profile skills. I'm going to have, we're going to switch that over real quick. That's okay. So you can see it projected. This is the Tarvin Learner Profile. It is aligned with the graduate profile. And we do, and we live this out every single day in our school and in our learning. And so tonight, we are going to showcase a couple of things that we're doing at Tarvin that help us enhance our Tarvin student/learner profile. Our focus tonight will really be on co-constructed learning and how we use thinking routines to think about our thinking. And I have invited some of our youngest Tarvin Trailblazers to share their wonderings and knowledge with you. And I know there's a chance they can go completely rogue. And I'm okay with that. And the reason I'm okay with that, to be honest with you, is because I think that we forget that empowered student learning starts the minute they step in our school system. And I can't wait to see our youngest Tarvin Trailblazers exit the system in 5th grade and go on to middle school with all of these skills and prepare them for their future. So we are excited to have them showcase a couple of things that we're doing at school so that they can share their learning with you. I'm going to introduce them. Actually, I'm going to have them introduce themselves. How about that?
Hi, everybody. I'm Hannah Auni and I'm a kindergarten teacher at Tarvin. And with me, I have a friend.
I'm Ben.
What's your name? And you are in?
I'm in kindergarten.
I'm Tiffany Kuski. I'm also a kindergarten teacher. And I have...
Judith. In kindergarten, in Ms. Kuski's class.
So Ms. Auni, would you like to talk to us about a thinking routine, a structure that she's using in class to help our students with empowered learning?
Sure. So the one that I'm going to showcase here in a minute is called a Story Walk. But the reason that we got here was a big idea called conceptual planning, where the kids help co-create a word. And that is how we center our learning, is around that word. Everything relates to it. In this nine weeks, our word is patterns. And you'll kind of see a pattern in the Story Walk that Ben is going to lead us in in just a minute. All right. I am going to let him take the floor and explain our book that we read recently. And he's going to go through the Story Walk that our class made all together.
Once upon a time, there was a little old lady that wasn't afraid of anything. She walked into the forest. Two shoes go clomp-clom. She kept walking in the forest. She found one pair of pants and they said, "Squiggle, squiggle." She kept walking into the forest. Two shoes go clomp-clom. One pair of pants goes squiggle, squiggle. She kept walking. One shirt go shake, shake.
So Ben, were you part of creating this?
Oh, yeah.
Tell us about that.
So I wrote the author's name.
You did? Did you do anything else on here?
No.
You didn't? Who else made all these pictures?
My class.
And can you read this book by yourself now?
I don't know the author's name.
Would you like for us to remind you?
Linda Williams.
Thank you, Ben, for sharing your learning with us and what you didn't... Okay, we're going to let you talk. All right. So back to what Hannah was saying about our conceptual planning. Our team gets together before the next nine weeks and we look at all of the teaks. We pull them all out. And then we look for a pattern that's kind of happening in those teaks. And it just happens to be that our concept this nine weeks is... What, Judith? What's our concept?
Patterns.
Patterns. And so in our classroom, we make a learning wall. And what does our learning wall have on it, Judith?
Patterns.
And where do we find patterns?
Times.
What do you mean, times? Oh, like when Olivia goes to the bus, then YMCA, bus, YMCA, bus. You're right. Like how we get home. What else does our learning wall say? Look, it's right up there if you need help.
Pumpkins.
Pumpkins. What did we learn about pumpkins? It's a pattern.
It goes patterns.
Yeah, but what is the pattern?
Seed, spout, leaf, vine, flower, green pumpkin, orange pumpkin.
Yeah, and then what happens?
It gets wilty.
It gets wilty. And then what does it do?
Do it all over again.
It does it all over again. And does that make a pattern? It does. How do we come up with the things we put on our learning wall, Judith? Who decides what goes up there? Well, me, but also when you see stuff, what do you do? What do you tell me when you find a pattern?
Ms. Kuski, there's a pattern.
And what do we do? We take a picture and what do we do?
Put it on the learning wall.
We put it on the learning wall. Your shoes are up on the learning wall, right?
Yeah.
Or your socks, because they had a what?
Pattern.
A pattern. Does our learning wall help you remember what a pattern is?
Thank you, Judith. Thank you, Mrs. Kuski. Judith, do you think about patterns or see patterns in other places besides school? Can you think of an example?
Where?
Where would you might see a pattern?
Sometimes at the pool.
Okay. Tell me about that. Where do you see them?
I jump in and then I swim back and then I jump in.
Then you jump in?
Good connection. Very good. Thank you to our kindergarteners and our kindergarten teachers for coming. I'm going to have our 2nd grader come up here next. All right, we've invited our 2nd grader and 2nd grade teacher. I'd love for them to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Kirsten Rogers, the 2nd grade teacher.
And this is Parker.
And Parker may look a little familiar to the other student that was here just a few seconds ago. And Parker here is going to talk to us about thinking routines that we use in our school to really have kiddos start thinking deeply about their thinking. And one of the thinking routines that we use is called a tug-of-war. And his grade level did a tug-of-war. Can you tell us exactly what a tug-of-war is, though, Parker? What's a tug-of-war? Come up to the microphone here.
A tug-of-war is basically a vote. And we're trying to choose what one we think. And we try again, testing it and learning a little more about it. And then we choose again, yes or no, or I'm not sure.
So Parker, can you tell me about this tug-of-war right here?
This tug-of-war says, "Objects can change form."
Okay. And what did you decide? Did you decide the first time you saw this? Yes? I don't know? No?
The first time I saw this, I chose yes.
Tell me about that.
When something has a vibration or it's caused by something, it will move.
Awesome. Okay. And so what things did you do in school to have you keep thinking about this? Can objects change forms?
I've been thinking that...
Did you do something in school that had you think about this?
What was the provocation we did right after that, when we all went outside?
Sublimation?
Oh, that's a big word. We did learn that big word. We planted a seed with that word. What was it that is showing sublimation?
We took dry ice and we saw what would happen. And then dry ice turned into a gas.
So it skipped which phase?
Water. That's called sublimation.
Very good.
Excellent. So you'll remember that word for a long time, right?
Yes.
So we talked about tug-of-wars, and I don't know if you remember this, but I said, "Could you think of a tug-of-war of your own?" Do you remember what we talked about when you said, "Yeah, I think I have an idea"?
Yes.
What tug-of-war did you want to create of your own?
Reptiles can live longer than any animal. They're true or false.
Yeah. So he wanted to do a tug-of-war with that because he's been thinking about how this thinks about his thinking. So we are excited to do all of these thinking routines. This is just one of many that we use at Tarvin to help our students really take that ownership of learning and continue to think about what they're learning outside of our walls. So I thank you so much for letting us showcase Tarvin. We appreciate you and all that you do.
Next, we're going to watch a video recognizing maintenance. This is our Maintenance Appreciation Week. And so we really want to give a shout-out to all of the Leander ISD employees that take care of all of our buildings and schools. So let's watch this video.
Shout-out to all the maintenance people, all plant services. I know you guys hold it down.
Thank you, guys, for all that you guys can do for our school and helping us build our school and keep it together.
Thank you, maintenance, for fixing the bottom of our big circle. Especially, thank you, Joe.
Repairing anything that breaks and hurts somebody, Mr. Joe will always help them.
Especially Joe here at Tarvin. Shout-out, Joe. Anything we need, put a work order in. Carpet comes up, gluing it down. Some kids get caught in the metal flashing on the side, glue it back in. You know, banners falling, anything that we ask for, you guys got it, especially Joe.
We also appreciate the way he interacts with our kids and is just happy to be around all the time.
Okay, next on our agenda is the Citizen Commons portion of the evening. And before I invite the first speaker to the podium, we're going to watch a short introductory video.
Hi, my name is Isabel and I'm a senior at Glenn High School. The district and the Board of Trustees are the local government body responsible for serving the educational needs of all schoolchildren, like me and my friends here at Leander Independent School District. Their mission is to cultivate each individual student while creating a safe and supportive environment. The Board is now taking up the Citizen Common Agenda item. This is dedicated time during this meeting to hear from the whole community. And the entire LISD family is listening. The district believes the Leander family thrives when we ensure a welcoming, safe, and caring environment. To our speakers, before you speak, we hope you have read the guidelines specified in Board Operating Procedures and BED Local. The Board wants to hear from everyone. Please be mindful of your conduct and the example you are choosing to set when presenting complex information. Remember that schoolchildren of all ages may participate in board meetings either by watching them online or you might even see some of us in the audience. Still, remember that there are other ways you can communicate with the Board. You can send them an email or just tell them that you would like to chat sometime. When the Board President calls your number, remember, watch the timer and focus your remarks to the time allotted. We know it can be hard, but please, conclude your comments when you hear the chime.
All right, we're going to start with Speaker Number One. Speaker Number One can come up to the podium.
I'm sorry, it's going to be kind of a comfortable topic, but let's go with it. My name is Luis W. Hernandez. I am a parent at Leander ISD. My son attends Vista Ridge High School. Before that, he was attending Glenn High School. Bullying is the unseen enemy, the shadow figure that lurks like any deadly disease. Some self-aware parents can see symptoms when it might be too late. In late developmental stages, on kids' lives, it is harder to pinpoint since the breach of adult and childhood can create a gap of questioning. Should I report it or should I solve it myself? This is more common than we think in high school students. When we watch this data with possible school violence and escalated perpetration such as a shooting, data shows that at least 75 of these victims can become the perpetrators themselves. The cause is the lack of action towards the individuals who have targeted them. The system choice of recourse actions do not equate to the consequences at hand. These victims do not feel neither hurt nor validated. We can add the factor of neurodivergence into this. In this spectrum or umbrella, students with, but not limited, with Asperger, autism, ADD, and ADHD. The amount of pressure put on this community to fit into the social norms is immense.
That was the 92nd.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry about that. And so if there's more, you can email it to the Governance Team. And you can email it to the Board.
I do.
Thank you.
So that means it's done?
The Citizen Comments are 92nd.
Okay. I thought it was five minutes.
What was that? But you can, if, like, we can turn it back on and you can finish your thought, like your last sentence, you know? But I'm going to ask you to please respect the time and just, you know, finish that last sentence.
Okay. So it's done or I finished the last sentence?
You have one sentence, yeah.
Well, my son was targeted at Vista Ridge by two bullies. And the police was called as he was a perpetrator. And he was about to bring a gun when nothing, none of that stuff was actually said. And he was about to bring a gun when nothing, none of that stuff was actually said.
Thank you for speaking. Speaker number two.
Uh, thank you to the board, to the teachers and staff of Leander Independent School District, and to the police who are here to protect us. Uh, congratulations to the winning candidates, uh, who are in the room. Um, greetings from our daughters who campaigned very hard for three of those candidates. Uh, we went out there and tried to get about 50,000 pair of eyes as a family. And the names of the candidates we preferred because we thought that they were there to protect all students and all schools and serve them. So that's great. This district is awesome because it values the student voice. But they do want to give some feedback that all across the political spectrum, there's probably a little bit of additional learning on how to respect student voice because students have agency. They have their own consciences, their own political views, their own ways they would like to protect their friends and get the word out about who the preferred candidates are. So in our case, in our family, we're a multiracial family. Our kids are biracial. And the thing that they would like to know is, people to know is, in the whole school community, both parents get to speak when their kids are biracial. You don't get to regulate on the basis of race. When they're girls, you don't say only the moms can speak and the dads can. When, as far as age is concerned, kids get to speak. And as far as culture is concerned, some families think that the parents are accountable to the kids and not the reverse. So those are student voice comments our daughters wanted to raise. We want to thank the school district for all the ways it gives full flower to the idea of student voice. Thank you.
Thank you, speaker number two. Next, we're gonna move over to our next agenda item, which is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. For the first time, all six LISD bands have qualified for the UIL State Marching Band Championship. And I wanted to stay here for a second, uh, and point some things out. So in my opinion, this is a direct result of our continuous improvement culture. This is an outcome measure of empowered student learning, of empowered staff, of impactful family engagement, of access, and of safe and innovative learning environments. In other words, this is an outcome measure of our strategic plan. So let's talk a little bit more about outcome measures and goal setting and what this means in this case. So I didn't start out by setting a SMART goal that sounded something like this. So let me repeat that. I did not start out by setting a SMART goal that sounded something like this. Every high school band will qualify for the State Marching Band Championship by November of 2024. Instead, I set a goal that sounded something like this. Every high school band will get the resources, the professional learning, and the support that they need to lean into our culture of continuous improvement and get better every day. And this is the result. So I want to go a step further and say, so what does empowered student learning look like in band? So number one, it's time on task. Some of us are band parents. A lot of us, actually. Or have been. So time on task. They spend a lot of time improving their craft in a variety of ways. Here's just a few examples. Band is double-blocked, so they go to band every single day for 90 minutes. They also show up at seven in the morning or earlier for master classes with, with, uh, experts in their particular instrument. They are all encouraged to take private lessons outside of school. Every minute of rehearsal time is scheduled ahead of time. There, there is no downtime. UIL, in fact, has to limit how much time they can rehearse because they know what will happen if they don't. They're also constantly assessing their progress against benchmarks. So there are weekly sign-offs on individual music performances. There's weekly goals for their group performances. And one of the most important parts of this process is the leadership structures that they have in place that firmly puts the learning and the ownership of that learning in the hands of the students. So that was empowered learning. Now, I could go through a process like this for every one of those five goals that I pointed out at the beginning, but I think you get the picture. So of course, our bands are 5A and 6A. So this past week, we had the 5A State Marching Band Championships. And it was an incredible experience to stand on this field just a few feet away from these kids as they announced that Leander ISD had the bronze medal with Leander High School, the silver medal with Rouse High School, and the gold medal with Cedar Park High School. You don't seem impressed. So we had a fourth 5A high school that was also in the state preliminary contest, and they end placed 16th. So that's Glenn High School, our newest high school. Um, and they have come an incredibly long way in a very short amount of time. Um, and we're very, very proud of their performance as well. This coming weekend, we have, uh, the super-regional Bands of America Contest in San Antonio, um, which will have all six of our bands competing again on Friday and Saturday. And then next Monday and Tuesday is the 6A State Marching Band Competition. And we'll see our two 6A high schools down in San Antonio again. This Monday and Tuesday, we also held our annual continuous improvement conference. This is an incredible showing of professional learning for all of our staff. We have to split it into two separate venues. Um, we split it this time by elementary and secondary. Um, elementary at Glenn High School and secondary at Vista Ridge High School to make sure that we could fit all of them in. This is our 31st year to do this continuous improvement conference. Um, and it truly is just legendary. Uh, on day one, on Monday, we had 350 sessions with a total of 412 presenters. Now, some of those are coming from outside the district as experts and helping us in the strategic plan areas that we're working on. Um, but a lot of those presenters are internal, uh, employees of the district who are sharing their craft with others in the district. Um, some of our featured speakers this year were John Spencer, A.J. Giuliani, Jonathan Alzheimer, Brandon Jones, and Casey Bell. Those were some of our big names. Um, and then just a whole host of, of our other employees across the district sharing the best practices with their peers. Wanted to share with you just a couple of themes from the, the post-CIC survey regarding the favorite sessions. So at that elementary school, they were looking at things like executive function, behavioral supports. They really liked A.J. Giuliani, um, as well as all the AI and tech integration, um, including the interactive panel sessions, because of course, those were new panels in all of our schools this year, and phonics and literacy. Uh, at the secondary level, building thinking classrooms. That's the work that we're doing in our math classrooms across the district. Um, again, the AI and tech integration, student engagement, um, national board certification. Uh, we're making a big push on national board certification, uh, across the district. You'll hear more about that as we go through, um, the next several months in the budget process. And then here, neurodiversity and inclusivity as well. Just some of the feedback regarding day two of CIC. So day one is all formal sessions. Day two, um, our campus, campuses have time with, uh, all of their faculty on their home campuses. And so you can see some of the positive feedback that we have, um, from day two of the conference as well. You might recognize some of these students. Um, you've met them already once, uh, and you'll meet them again in May. These are some of the members of the Superintendent Student Advisory Council. Uh, they were offered the opportunity to put on a session at CIC, and so they took us up on their day off, by the way. Um, they showed up, they took it very seriously, and they did a fantastic job in sharing their empowered voice. And of course, teachers and others across the district sharing their craft. A.J. Giuliani. All right, here are some, we're shifting gears now. So, um, you'll hear a little bit more about this incident in detail later in the, in the program tonight. Um, here are some of the 30 bus drivers who served in the southern part of the district during our gas leak incident that led to standstill traffic for several hours, um, on Friday, October the 25th. That date doesn't sound right to me, but I think it was the 18th. We would like to thank these bus drivers for their dedication in putting students first in their words and their actions. Um, several of them sat on buses for, for many hours. Um, and their commitment to student safety was just truly remarkable. So we want to just recognize the incredible work that these bus drivers did during that very difficult incident. Uh, we did have election this week, and so unofficial results of those elections have Nikosi Nelson coming in at place three, Anna Smith remaining in place four, and Shavet Faschekan remaining in place five. Uh, just a quick timeline. We will be canvassing the election on the 18th of November and swearing in our new board member on November 21st. That's our next regular meeting. Um, and then... Right now, we have schedule for January 9th, uh, for the Christine Maurer appreciation. She's way too happy that this is her last meeting. Thank you, Madam President. Happy to answer any questions, Jeff.
I just wanted to add one thing really quick to your band section that I think what doesn't come up a lot in these conversations with all of those kids is that if those kids don't pass, they don't play. And that goes for theater, sports, any, any UIL activity. If those kids aren't passing, they don't play. So for our students to be able to do something like that, especially to that magnitude, it literally takes every single one of their teachers to help them get there. So I just wanted to shout that out, and especially as a band mom, to say thank you. Because I know my kid wouldn't be where he was without the entire network of this district making sure that he gets to accomplish all the things that he wants to.
I'm gonna jump on that bandwagon just for a second. It takes hundreds of parents as well to move props, to drive trucks, to help with meals, all of the things. The, the uniform moms, the, all of the med parents, all of those people make that machine run really smoothly. And without them, there's no way we could do it. And I just want to tack on one little thing. There are 252 5A bands in the state of Texas, and Leander ISD is one, two, three, and 16. That's amazing. And I told you all before, it's different here, and that's just a testament to so many people putting in their blood, sweat, and tears into these programs. So, great job. Just one little detail about Cedar Park High School. This is their sixth consecutive year winning the state championship. Yeah, and like she said, 250-plus 5A schools. That's huge.
And competition is still going. Um, to confirm the timeline that you showed up there, um, does that mean that this is Trustee Maurer's last board meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so does that mean you want to make it really, really long to like draw out the moment? Christine, for old times, 2:00 AM. Got it?
Christine asked me in honor of her last board meeting, she wants us all to try to make this the fastest board meeting ever. So, so I think, you know, let's try to honor Christine's, um, request here. I'm gonna go ahead and move us on to the next agenda item, which is item 6A1, discussion of Soft Choice tailored learning platform. We're moving that one in the agenda since we have a couple of guest presenters. Uh, so that's why we're moving over to that 6A1.
Thank you, Madam President. While they come up here, um, I'm gonna briefly give an introduction, and I'm gonna let them introduce themselves. Um, this stems from our conversation over superintendent evaluation a couple of meetings ago, um, where we were talking about student profiles, personal learning plans, student portfolios. Um, and we were talking about the ability to have, um, some tools that are gonna be necessary as we go forward, making sure that we were well-prepared, uh, to produce those tools, um, as we go forward. And so, um, we've been doing some work with Soft Choice, um, through my relationship with Dr. Vrunland. Um, and so we asked them to come out tonight to just give you a flavor and a picture of, of the work that they're doing in partnership with Leander ISD, um, to really develop a tool that can help us further our strategic plan as we go through the next three years towards paint done. So I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Vrunland. Thank you.
It is very good to be here. Um, pull up my PowerPoint. Do I just advance a slide one? Okay. So I, I just very excited to be here. It's very unusual for me to sit on this side of the table. I'm used to sitting on that side of the table. Um, if you don't know, I was, I retired as superintendent of schools in Mesquite ISD. Um, unfortunately, you apparently beat Potite and North Mesquite in the band competitions. Um, but, uh, we're pretty proud of our bands up there as well. But it's exciting to be here and, and really am honored to, to be here and, and really to present, um, a partnership experience that I hope, uh, we continue to have with Leander ISD because I think we share some stuff in common, especially with our DNA and our desire to meet what is on that screen right there. And that is to partner to create a learning experience that uncovers uniqueness and unleashes genius. And it was exciting for me to be in the room when Bruce really brought this out. And I'm just really proud to be a partner of Bruce's. Um, he, if you don't know, you should know, he is one of the most innovative, thoughtful leaders in the state of Texas, and frankly, I think will be nationally as well, um, carrying Leander forward at a national profile, I believe, is in his destiny. And I, I just really excited to be a part of that. Um, as we move forward, I just, I want to share a little bit about what uncovering uniqueness and unleashing genius means to me. Because I think it's really important to understand the why behind things. And so I, I want you as a board to think about this a little bit. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time in this, but I, I really think it's important to always think about the why. Why is this important work? And why is Soft Choice really interested in partnering with you in this work of unleash, or uncovering that uniqueness and unleashing that genius? And it really goes back to, for me, it goes back to my experience as a superintendent and wanting to make certain that all children were receiving an education that put them in a space of being self-determined adults and control the quality of their freedom. I wanted to make sure that the learning they experienced put them in a place to access the economy they were walking into. And that's not just for my, the students in Mesquite ISD. It's also for those two young people up there. Those are my grandchildren. That's Jocelyn Joy and William Everett Vrunland, and that's my son Caleb and his wife. They're eight and soon to be six years old. They're gonna matriculate into an economy that is quite different than the one we have now. And if they're going to be successful in that economy as educators, we have to prep them for that. And that's why I think it's so important to pay attention to that concept of really uncovering the uniqueness, that's, that special design that every child has that is unique to them, and then putting them in a position to unleash genius. And so for me, this is really important. I did some of this work in Mesquite ISD. And when I retired, I wanted to continue on this path of really bringing this forward to, to other superintendents, other districts to think about and see if they wanted to partner. And the partner that I really got excited to work with was Soft Choice. And so I wanted to let them introduce themselves a little bit, but they share in common a desire to go down this same pathway. So if I, I'm gonna turn it over to April to introduce herself.
Hello, April Aviv. I am the Client Partner Program Manager for Education for Soft Choice. I've been working with Soft Choice to do this for the past three years. But prior to that, I was with Dr. Vrunland at Mesquite, giving, because what, we were another two years there. So it's been five years in, uh, working on, on this kind of effort. And, and, and it's inspiring, and, um, I wake up inspired every day to do this work. And I, I really hope that the children have the kind of opportunity that I have to find that passion that they're, that is unique to them, that makes them want to get up and, and... that the children have the kind of opportunity that I have to find that passion that they're, that is unique to them, that makes them want to get up and, and do that work every day, too.
Hi, how you doing, I'm Josh Bennett, uh, I'm a chief technologist here at Soft Choice. I helped take this man's dream and vision, and hopefully soon your dream and vision for what your students need, and, and connect the dots to the technology to power that, and to move this forward with you guys in a partnership.
Hi, my name's Chris Shengoff, and I'm a complex solutions architect, working with data and AI at Soft Choice. And for my five years that I was fortunate enough to work in a school district under some amazing folks, I don't know if anyone here knows Antonio Lamo, superintendent back then in San Bernardino C I S D, or Chance in Asia, who was my supervisor in the technology department. But I learned a real connection between, I'm not loud enough, a real connection between the technology that we bring into play and the excellence we draw out of our students. And it became very exciting to me how we were able to make that happen, just by bringing innovative solutions. So fortunately, even though I went to the other side of things, I still got to see this happen, I'm very excited to see what we're gonna be doing together here in Leander ISD.
Thank you. Hi, everyone, my name is Fidel, I'm an account executive here at Soft Choice, and I work with businesses that were founded before the year two thousand that are interested in learning more about what AI looks like into their business, so very excited to be here.
And so we're very excited, I wanted to share some of the team, but I can assure you that if we partner on, on this work, it's a much larger team, they'll be invested in the work of your district. And so I want to go ahead and go to the next slide and, and start talking about something really important to me, and that is to make certain that we're driven by purpose. Not by strategies, but by purpose, because strategies should change and evolve as you align to purpose, and Bruce has spoken to that so many times, and I'm really, really excited to be a part of that. I love this quote, "Learning and innovation go hand in hand, the arrogance of success is to think that what you did today, yesterday, will be sufficient for tomorrow." That's from a guy from the eighteen fifties in England as a minister, talking that language, that's appropriate to today. We need to be constantly looking at why we do the things we do, and are they aligned to purpose? And if your purpose is to, you know, uncover that uniqueness in a child and ultimately unleash that genius, then you have to think, how do we create the, the circumstances for that to happen? And that's why we're here today, is to help partner with you on that very work. And I gotta say, it wasn't planned part of my presentation, but that elementary school is exactly what we're talking about. When they were talking about their profile and how they were aligning to that profile, and then how they were creating unique situations for children to express their learning, it was like, man, I should have just let them make my presentation, we'd be good to go, and you would be out of here earlier than you're going to be. So, but, um, with that in mind, I want to share that it's not unusual to reform in schools. And I think it's important to pay attention to this, in eighteen ninety-two, a committee of ten was put together to do that very work, because their education system wasn't working for the economy we were graduating kids into. They designed a very different system in eighteen ninety-two, from this disparate kind of education background to standardized education system. But, and that was because we were only graduating four percent of the students in the United States at that time. Four percent, and they said, we've got to do better than this if we're gonna let this economy, this industrialized economy move forward. They recreated a different system, I always like to say ironically, created from a country that no longer exists called Prussia. But we still follow that model a hundred and thirty years today. There are very few things we still follow, a hundred and thirty years from the past, but we still follow the same model in schools, but the economy shifted. And so we have to think about that as we're trying to prep children for that economy. And so one of the things I want to do is point out what that economy looks like, this is from Deloitte. It's not Dave, it's not something I pulled out of a magazine, this is from Deloitte, and so significant institution that understands the nature of present and future work. And what Deloitte has indicated is that fifty percent of current jobs are vulnerable to automation. And if you don't kind of realize that, just instinctually, I'll just give you an example in your own community. You have a pop-up community of three D printed houses going on in, in, in the Austin area right now. And it's growing, and it's gonna grow larger. That's automation replacing what otherwise might have been manual. Now, Deloitte indicates there are gonna be more jobs, it's not like there are gonna be fewer jobs in this future economy, but we've got to put students in a different space to access opportunity than what we've done in the past. That's simply what we have to pay attention to, and we have to be quick in our, in our attention to that, because it changes so quickly. Look at that last bullet, there are forty-six percent of workforce right now is in gig-based economy jobs, right now. One in two by twenty thirty. That means one in two graduates is gonna have to access opportunity in a way that we are not accustomed to, at least not me. I may be the old guy in the room actually here, which kind of scares me, I never was the old guy, but I might be right now. But we have to pay attention to this, because here's the reality, a gig-based economy or talent-based economy means students have to create their own opportunities, workers have to create their own opportunities, and some of you probably are already seeing children do that in your own experience around them, where they're having to go get learning, and then take that learning to be power to opportunity they create. Either doing projects or companies, or doing presentations, or whatever it might be, they have to create their own economy. In many cases, they're creating their own organizations called exponential organizations, these are mission-driven organizations. You have students doing that right in your own district right now, I promise you, in your high schools, creating their own businesses based on something that they're really excited about, that is attached to their uniqueness, that has unleashed their genius. And they're already doing it, and some are making hundreds of thousands of dollars as high school students. You may not realize it, but I promise you it's happening, and it's amazing, and it's gonna happen more. And the bullet that caught your attention is that third one, lifelong reinvention. And I graduated from college in nineteen eighty-six. It was estimated the lifetime of my learning in nineteen eighty-six would, all the learning in nineteen eighty-six, it was estimated would sustain me for the entirety of my career, thirty years. Of course, I happened to enter right as the technology revolution just hit the home market, right, and so it changed everything. Today, my son, who just graduated a year and a half ago from, sorry, I probably shouldn't say where he graduated from, it's another university in the town, a little ways away from here. But graduated from A and M with his master's degree in architecture, working here in the Austin area for W R A. It's estimated the lifetime of his learning is five years. Which means he has to be constantly reinventing himself, constantly looking at the economy, trying to understand what that change means for architecture. And if he doesn't, five years, maybe eight years from now, his learning will start to become irrelevant, and that is not a good place for him to be. So what does that mean if that's the reality? If, if Deloitte is saying, we have studied this marketplace, we understand the reality coming, what does that mean for our students? Because that's the bottom line, we're not all here to be market people, right? So what does that mean? It means this, and you actually used this word earlier today. It means they have to have a great deal of agency over their own learning and work. They have to. It's no longer gonna be, but if you're in one in two, you're not working for someone, you're working for yourself. And you're gonna have to have a great deal of agency over your own learning and work, and that has to be something that's learned, it's not something that just happens. Sorry, I'm right-handed, it's hard to do that with my left hand. You have to be very adaptable, you can't have a fixed mindset. You have to constantly be looking at the marketplace and changing the way you think in order to adapt to what is happening. And that is something that we need to teach children, it's not something they just gather out of the air. You have to be someone who can discern what you're seeing and make good choices around that, and that is really difficult in today's marketplace. It doesn't take much to look at a computer and see what's going across that screen and go, how do I discern truth? How do I discern what's really going on? You have to practice that, that doesn't just happen. You have to be a continuous learner, hopefully that popped out on that whole, that whole thirty years versus five years. You have to be a continuous learner, we used to talk about this in kind of catchphrases of being a lifelong learner. It can't be a catchphrase, it has to be a reality. You have to be a collaborative learner and worker. And your collaboration is going to have to occur in a variety of spaces. Some face-to-face, and some across virtual networks, there's just no other option, you have to do it. As you form your own exponential organization, you'll be working with people all over the world, bringing something to your organization. You're not going to travel for all of that anymore. And then finally, you have to be someone who is giving voice to creating solutions. I think one of the problems we have when we talk about student voice sometimes is we don't pour into the idea that it should be around creating solutions or expressing your learning. We, we don't just want voice for voice sake, we want voice that leads to something. And hopefully that resonates with you, I think it does, because as you prepare for students for this thing, what I just showed you, you need to help students discover their interest, a passion to purpose. There is no way you take agency over your learning and work if you're not in that space. And that is that unique space that Bruce has talked about, how do we help students really uncover what they're passionate about as they're going through their learning, and then how do we create experiences for them to explore that in a learning environment? You have to develop leaderships more intentionally and more equitably. One of the things I see when I see band competitions is, you know, you all talked about that band quite a bit. Internally in that band, there's lots of degrees of leadership and growth that's occurring, and we profile that leadership, and we should. But we need to recognize in the economy we're graduating kids into, if they're, one in two are gonna be going into that gig-based economy, we better be thinking about how we intentionally develop those leadership attributes, and how we track them, and how we help students set goals to develop them more thoroughly. We can't just lead that to chance. To me, this is the equity conversation of, of the future, it's how we get them into this space. Then we have to use data to help students see their potential as, as found in their passion and their, and their strengths, right? And we can do that, we can, we can do that now, we'll talk to you about how that works in a second. We have to focus more on the qualities and purpose of the individual versus specific careers, because those careers are gonna change so quickly. We can't be just thinking we're gonna prepare someone, we start preparing them in ninth grade, and by the time they graduate, that career has evolved into something else already. I love to share this story, when I was a superintendent, starting, I'd started talking about all the folks who were going to input data into systems, right? It's now one in a hundred. They don't need the, it was hundreds of thousands we needed, coders across the world, right, today it's one in a hundred. Now it's all about prompt engineers, and we need thousands of prompt engineers who only need a high school certification and, and go online, or a high school degree and go online and get a certification, and they can earn seventy, hundred thousand dollars right now. The problem is, the prompt engineer role will disappear over time as well, and so we have to be constantly thinking about the attributes of the student and preparing them to explore opportunity in that space. And then finally, we need to train students to be agents over their own learning and work, and then let them be agents. And that, that is something we'll talk a little bit about here, this is something that we share in common with you, because this is already in your space. This is you, so when I say this is you, I mean this is you. Knowing and appreciating individual students, knowing and appreciating each student, right, I think that's fast, that's absolutely fabulous. Then look at that next blue line, own their own learning. And then go down, individual outcomes, personal growth, these are things that are a part of your own core beliefs and mission. And then if I go to the next slide, I go to your graduate profile that was just talked about today. Understanding a rapidly changing global society, you already know that's happening, you're paying attention to that. Critical and creative thinkers, skilled communicators and collaborators, how do you track those things? How do you make certain that's actually happening? That's where data can be very helpful for you. And then finally, pursuing their interests and passions. And, and that's what I mean when I say there is an alignment between who you are and who we are. But that alignment even goes into your strategic plan. In your strategic plan, you talk about empowered student, in student learning, you talk about student ownership of learning, you talk about impactful family engagement. And for me, that's really powerful when you talk about impactful family engagement, because that moves from just being supporters and engaged in schools to be engaged in the learning of their children. And how can we help a parent be engaged in the learning of their children using a tool to help make that happen, and we can do that. So what are your goals and dreams, Bruce and I've had this conversation, hopefully they align well with what you're thinking. But if you look up there, this is what I've pulled from everything I've, the conversations I've had with your staff, conversations I had with Bruce, and the things I've read that you guys have approved. Students taking ownership over their own learning. That's a goal, that's a dream of yours, it's to have technology tool that helps people make better human decisions. I think for me, this is really important, it's not about having technology that just helps a student understand what A plus B equals. Right, it's about technology that helps a student better understand themselves, the parent understand their child better, the teacher understand that child better, and create learning experiences based on that uniqueness of that individual child. And for me, that's really important that we recognize each child is uniquely designed, and has opportunity to do some amazing things if we just can find that and help them find that. Students set and monitor their own goals, which is part of agency, I might add. Develop portfolios and provide exhibitions of work, all found in one space, which would be amazing. Increase engagement across parents, students, and staff, and that's engagement between parents and staff, parents and students, and students and staff. How can we create engagement in that space, which would significantly help the performance of students across all demographics? And then provide teachers with easy-to-access actionable data, something they can access and use. And part of that, I'll talk about in a second, but that really relies on us understanding what actual data do you want? What is the data you want quickly at the disposal of teachers, so they don't have to be data disaggregators? So they can form, that they can really focus in on the art of teaching. How can we do that? And then to help students know themselves better, understand that interest, a passion to purpose, and to be known better across all the staff at a school, even known even better by their parents, and I could tell you stories about parents who struggle to understand their child. I'm married to a psychologist, I'm an educator, and we've struggled to understand sometimes, so. All right, let's go, so are you ready for this? I would say you are, you've got a board that understands this and is, is highly committed to the engagement of, of students. You've got skilled staff that are dedicated to meet the current and future needs of students. You've got an incredible P L C program and passionate teachers in your district, you're well aware of them. And you've got a potential partner in us who's dedicated to supporting you in the very work that you are interested in. And that's, that's where we go next, so what does, let's go into that, for one of those first dreams, to have a technology tool that helps our people make better human decisions. This to me was what I was seeking when I was in Mesquite ISD, it's how we help our people better understand students and then use that information to create better learning experiences for students. And so what we have done is we built a tool that allows you to have real-time access to academic and non-academic information about a child. So the parent can have access to that, the teacher can have access to that, and the administrator and, and other staff members as deemed appropriate can have access to that information, and the student can even author into that. It creates a highly collaborative tool that the student, the teacher, and the parent are accessing, not just a tool for parents over here, or it's a tool for teachers over here, or something sort of for students over here, which we rarely give students access to their own data. And we're saying, here's a way that you can actually collaborate and pour into and author your own data, and I'll show you what that means in a second. It's highly flexible in that we can basically use the word customize it to your desired outcome and look for your students. It's not something off the shelf, this is something we work with you to understand what you're trying to achieve with your students. Obviously, it creates a very efficient place because it becomes a one-stop shop for data, and data that you want showing for students specifically, not data we're trying to describe to you, data you want for your students. And then it's, becomes highly intelligent in that it helps ascribe various elements of what a student is about, from their talents, from their, their strengths, from their interests, from their goals, and I'll talk about that in a second. It creates an opportunity for you to bring students together, and I'll show you what that looks like. By the way, this is a, a page that we're pulling from another district here in Texas, but the students are anonymous, they're not, that's not a real student. The next is students taking ownership over their learning, and to help students know themselves better and to be better known. Again, I talked about how students can author into this, and by that, what I mean is the students populate this. They say what they want the teacher to, what they want the, what they want others to know about them. They put in stuff on interests they have, they put in stuff, their extracurricular activities, and, and you'll see in a second, they even put in their own goals. And you monitored that, you collect that information, but guess what? Every teacher has that information now at their disposal, once a student inputs it, but it's not static data, because a student can change that over time. So when you're talking about the elementary student we just saw today, imagine as it progresses over time and their interests change. This information flows with them, and we get to better understand that child and how they've grown, so as a second-grade teacher, now I'm seeing as a fifth-grade teacher, I can see more about that child than I would have understood before, which gives me intelligence as a human decision-maker on how to work with that child. It creates an opportunity for me. It also, it gives me a chance as an administrator, when a child comes into my office and they've, they've had struggles, maybe they're in a discipline setting, maybe they're just struggling to be connected, I can look at this data and say, wait a minute, you share some common goals with other students, let's connect you. You set some, you wanted to set some goals around this in terms of leadership growth, let me help you with that. It becomes a tool for communication, again, understanding that child better, and that child starts to understand themselves better as well. My favorite feature of this, well, a couple of my favorite features, parents can access this. So parents start seeing stuff that they might not have understood about their child's interests, and go, wait a minute, I didn't know my son was interested in zoology, in animals. Well, let's figure out a way that I can use that information as a parent to be better connected to my child's learning. I didn't know that my child had goals set around leadership around this, let me see if I can in my, in my home, help them around those leadership attributes. Communicate with the teacher about how can I help my student grow in this personal goal that they have. This becomes a tool that becomes easily accessible, creating unique learning opportunities for kids based on the information. based on the information that is theirs. Not that we're trying to create for them. That is their data. This is... And it's pulled from internal. It's pulled from student authored. It's not something we grab from the outside. It's not third-party access. It is internal data about the child. And that becomes information that can drive decision-making for a campus even. If they start to see tendencies in their interests, they can drive some decision-making around that, knowing their students better, instead of everything just being historically driven. So I just... I point that out as a part of one of those goals. Another is increase engagement across parents, students, and staff, and provide teachers with easy-to-access actionable data. They can go here and see those goals. They can go here and see their performance across other classroom... Across classes. The parent can see anything they want to see in here. It builds an opportunity for clear collaboration around a variety of things between the teacher and the student and the student and the parent. I think it's really powerful. It's highly efficient. And for me, that's important. I want the role of the teacher to be made as focused on teaching as possible and remove the role of data disaggregation as much as possible. And maybe someday, we'll get there fully. And so, a teacher doesn't have to disaggregate data. The data shows itself as you want it to as a district. And then my favorite part, and I think Bruce's favorite part frankly in my conversations with him, is the goal-setting, the portfolio management, and the exhibition of work. And we can put this all in one space. And what really excites me, if you're going to have agency over learning and work, one of the things you need to start doing is establishing how you set goals. And you heard kindergartners talking about that just now. It's how you set goals, how you monitor those goals. But it's not just academic goals. It's those leadership goals that you want to track and manage to make sure students are progressing in their communication, in their collaboration, in their change management. Whatever it is that you, as Leander ISD, say, these are our goals for our students in terms of leadership attributes. They're not for me to name. They're for you guys to say and for us to say. How do we put those in the system? And it's for personal goals. And personal goals might be nothing more than, hey, I want to make sure I read a book, you know, once every week or once every two weeks. And my parent knows that's a personal goal. And so, a parent can engage in that and really support that. Or an academic goal of improving a letter grade in math. And the parent can support that. You see how it creates a collaboration around a student's goals, but the student is the one who's setting the goal. The student is the one who's monitoring and working to improve on those goals. It creates a space for that. And then it creates a space for them to portfolio that work around those goals and then create an exhibition space for stuff they want to exhibit as important work for them. This is what it means to own work, and we create a platform where all that can take place. How to tailor learning? I'm just going to go through this really quick. Bruce knows this, but I think this is really important. Train students. That's the goal-setting piece. Train them to own their learning. Train them to track that learning. Use transparent data on students' unique passions and leadership assets and to help teachers support the student. I'll give an example of that really quick. I was a history teacher. That's... I love history, right? And I still love history quite a bit. Imagine how many times history... You guys all have children who have been in the system or in the system. How many times have your children had to do a project in history? Pretty common, right? There's a project you got to do. If a teacher says, you know what? We're in the middle of the Civil War. I want you to choose something that you want to do a project on. You know what happens in most classrooms when that happens? A lot of blank looks. Imagine if they had access to data like this, and they determined... They saw that some students in their classrooms really had interest in fashion. Teacher doesn't need to do anything different. All the teacher has to say is, look, why don't you take your interest in fashion and write a report on Civil War fashion? All stratas of society in the Civil War. The economics behind it. Now that changes the formula of the student's engagement in learning, and yet they're still in the space of learning about the Civil War. And the teacher didn't have to do anything. They simply had access to information that the student provided, that otherwise they wouldn't have access to. That's how this tool can help a teacher support their students. And then smart student grouping. What if they had ten kids who had that kind of interest? Now, with a click of button, smart student grouping by interest, I can say, hey, why don't you ten go do a really major project on this? Create an exhibition like Bruce talks about. And now you've... Now you put kids together. They create their own unique learning experience. When a student does that, an exponential organization is just moments away. And that's... If I were a superintendent sitting today, one of my goals would be every one of my students has a mission-driven desire to create something. Hopefully, an exponential organization. But I want them to be driven by something, right? Because the economy they're entering. I want my grandchildren to be driven by that. So what we've essentially done was we've designed something that can help students make better informed decisions about their own learning experience and become self-directed learners. And I'm not going to sit on this slide any... Really, I just want you to see that. We've helped our teachers by putting them in experience to connect students to authentic learning and getting them more and more out of the position of having to be data disaggregators and more into the joy and art of teaching, which is what we want to do. I think every one of you on the dais would like to see that happen. And then, we want to help our parents connect with the learning of their children. And we believe this tool can help them do that. I'm excited to answer any questions, but mostly, I'm just excited to be a part of this potential... I mean, potentially to be a part of your vision as a district. I'll stop there and answer any questions and let the panel answer any questions that are about technology, because I don't know.
I'll start. I'll start. So when you said you were from Mesquite, I remembered two years ago, I believe, that you visited Mesquite.
You did.
And so, I wanted to know if their tool, if it's related to this one or not.
It is. It's very related. Yeah, very much in the same path. We obviously designed it. We were beta, because it was essentially something I was passionate about doing and got support to do that. It has now moved past Mesquite, but we have evolved it since. And so, we've tightened it up some. Of course, Mesquite has tightened it up too, because it's a tool that iterates over time. As you, as a district, say, hey, this is really important data I want, so you go and iterate the tool. I didn't talk about, for example, I... One of you is involved with special education. I don't remember who. I read that. But yes, one of the things I'm passionate about is using this tool to really make the role of special education more efficient by using doc AI kind of tools and so teach... So they don't... That's already used in medicine, but we don't use it in education.
So that was my question, is y'all talk about supports and intervention, right? A lot of the times, I know as a parent, I will ask for other ways for my child in regards to data. I don't want the DreamBox. I don't want the iStation. I want the actual data where they're sitting with a teacher.
Right.
So how is that going to relate to this? I'm trying to see how this meshes together. And as someone who's gone through that process, either trying to, you know, advocate for my child for services, I really lean on that data. And I'll be honest, when someone gives me computer data, I'm like, I will argue with it. So I'm trying to understand, how is this going to benefit our students with disabilities in regards and also help parents be able to advocate for what their students need?
Now, first, I need to say that that'll be fleshed out in the conversations, because this, as I said, is not off the... This is not an off-the-shelf... You're not buying something off the shelf. It's something we will build for you. And so, it'll be a conversation that obviously we want to have. But I will add this. In the way I look at it, it creates almost, not instant, but darn quick, darn close to instant communication between what's happening in the classroom to the parent. And using tools that we, for some reason, don't use in education, like voice-to-text, to make it easy for the teacher to tell the parent what's happening without having to go in and fill out a lot and bring in quick drop-and-drag evidence of what is happening. So the parent can go, okay, my child got, for example, more time on task today as part of their IEP. And oh, by the way, I've got evidence in the Dropbox of how that has worked for them and more time on task. I'm making a simple example, but that's how it can work, is creating really clear, very quick communication lines, but not just to the parent, to the diagnostician. So they're not seeking data. And if data isn't flowing, then it creates an alert mechanism to say, hey, we're not seeing data flow on this child and go quick-check, because that's not the way it works currently.
So are you seeing in real-time, parents will be able to see if their students were served the minutes or not?
I'm not saying real-time, but close. Because real-time, again, indicates that we are... We're able to somehow ask a teacher to instantly communicate that. That would be very difficult to do, but closer than now, because now what we're doing is what? We're waiting long time, right? I mean, long time. You're literally waiting for an ARD meeting before you're understanding that or you're doing your own check-ins. But again, it would be a process that we would communicate... Talk with you about in terms of what is it you anticipate it. But I would not say real-time on minutes. That would be pretty spectacular.
I have more questions, but we can ask offline. Just because if we're talking about that prompt support and parents are able to see... For me, I'm thinking, as a parent, okay, I want to see if my child's getting their 20 minutes of speech therapy every other day.
Oh.
And then that brings in another conversation, because then parents... I mean, I think it's a great tool as a parent, but as a staff, as a district who is... We need more special education educators. I'm just wondering how this is all going to work. So I have more questions, but we can ask that offline.
And if I can say, it's the facts. And we've had these conversations. Getting more special education educators is not in the near future, because we all know what's happening in the pipeline. And so, what we have to do is use tools that make the teachers we have far more efficient and communicate far more quickly to parents. I think that... And we can help the educator do that, without question.
So in interest of time, what I think I'd like to do is just kind of throw my questions out there and later get feedback on them, because there are a few of them. I would like to say, I agree with Anna. As a parent, this would empower a parent to move off of the benches and actually be the coach in the game a little more. And I like that. I like that empowerment. I think it could empower our teachers and could support them. I think there's benefit there. And as a school board, we've told Dr. Garing that one of, in the superintendent evaluation, him bringing a portfolio system into life is something we value in the evaluation, which is, I imagine, that's why we're having this presentation, because it has to do with, we told you, we want you to do it in a year. And so, you're like, okay, here's what we can do. So I see all the good things. I also see so many questions.
Sure.
And so, let me just run through some of them. So, you know, AI legislation is coming this time. And you talk about intelligence in the system. I think you're probably going to have some AI in there. Think AI can be good. It can also be unchecked, very dangerous. I'm concerned about the ability to connect a lot of dots and connect data so quickly like we've never done before, that does it cause wrong assumptions? Are we putting this together in a way that causes an issue that shouldn't be put together? I'm concerned about how this data is protected, because it is our students' data.
Yep.
And so, if the teacher puts something in there, that has to be between the teacher and the parent and the administration. Nobody else, no third parties, nobody. How do we, when we do this, give our parents the assurance to know that this is not about big data, are selling their data, protecting their kids? Because that safe and secure innovative environment has to go into something like this, right? That's going to be very important. And then at the same time, how do we also have, like, the intellectual property rights stay with the kids? And in other words, I don't know, their knowledge base, their skill sets. It's not going out and going out somewhere else, right? There's... It's got to be very self-contained. I'm sure y'all thought of this already. Those are just some of the things that I thought of. The other thing is, as a district, you're developing the system for us. So how are we not locked into a vendor? I don't mind it if we don't want to go anywhere else, but if we can't go anywhere else, that's something different, right? So once we develop this, what are we locked into? What is the long-term goal for that? And then, I guess, finally, out of all of this, I'm just thinking about, how do we train our staff? How do we make sure it's easy for the staff, to Anna's point? And is there a way we could get buy-in from a community if we decide to move forward? So I'm thinking of something like the instructional materials, where we have such a great system that when we get ready to put instructional material, a textbook, into our students' hands, it goes out into the community for comment. Parents comment on it. Our teachers comment on it. And then it comes to the board. So I want something like this to have that much of a robust process, where maybe it's not all built out and they're commenting on all the pieces, but enough to where parents are able to see this and comment on it, teachers are able to, before it got too far into development.
And I'll comment on a couple of things. One is, this actually, we're not using AI in the initial component of this. That would... Maybe not ever. I don't know. That'll be something that'll be discussed in the future. But that is, that what you saw today doesn't incorporate an AI component to it. The second is, it's... There is no third-party access to this data. You have a sys system that you use, a student information system. This wouldn't be too dissimilar to that. The data stays inside. Obviously, being the cloud and it's protected, but it stays internally. It's not shared data. One of the things we do hope is that the data can carry with their students. That is something that, long-term, we desire to see, that a student can actually make their data portable. But we're... I don't know that we're quite there yet. But that would be amazing if a student could take their portfolio with them to business opportunities, to college, to whatever. That would be a long-term desire, is that they own their data. That... We're not in that space yet. The other piece that I think is really important is the rollout component. Now, we've not talked about that, because we're not at that space yet. But as superintendent of schools, my rollout was, the only way this could be accessed is if the parent opted in. There wasn't... It wasn't an opt-out process. The parent had to opt in. And by the time we were done, it was over 90%. Because I think people want, for their own children, to see information about their children that helps them, as a parent, their children that helps them, as a parent, to collaborate more, more fully with the teacher, but also collaborate more fully with their child. And so, I, I can't speak to, to what you would do in your district, but just what we did. The other thing, Bruce, I'll, I'll let you speak to this, with the rollout process you've shared with us, and it's, it's not, yeah, it wouldn't be super fast, and it would follow some of the processes you're kind of talking about.
Yeah, I think the key value here for us is that we're building the human capacity model of this already, um, that's part of our paint done in this first year. Um, we know that we have to, at some point, have a technology tool that can help us to manage all those pieces. We also know that we're not ready for it yet. But if we don't build it, by the time we are ready for it, if we start building it, then it'll be too late. And so, that's why we're starting this process now, of how do we build this technology tool in parallel to this capacity that we're developing on the human side? So that eventually, when the human side demands this tool, we have it ready and we can make that marriage happen. Um, the only other thing I'll say is that, um, this is designed to shortcut and shore up human decision-making. Um, so, for instance, one of the biggest problems that we have is the initial relationship building between teachers and students. Um, because teachers have to get to know kids before they can really help them to own their own learning. We're hoping that this can shortcut that process and make that a, a more rapid process.
I have a question for you, and I think for Jace. It's just something I'm thinking more for our administration. I feel like a lot of the questions we're asking are, what are the things we'd like to see? You know, is it going to do? And quite honestly, I'm thinking, wouldn't we develop all of these answer, you know, it's important for us that it's hosted in this space where it's secure. It's important for us that it does have a packaging so that students can take it with them forever. But when I say all those things, I'm thinking that really sounds like an RFP. And, so have we gone to RFP for this? And why aren't we going to RFP for this?
So we have not. Um, Soft Choice is on, um, one of the purchasing cooperatives, and so purchasing-wise, we're in good shape, um, and we're not concerned about that. We've had extensive conversations about that. This is not a process that can develop easily, um, in an RFP process in my mind. This is truly a partnership that has to be developed over an extended period of time. Um, because this is not just a vendor tool that we're buying off, off the shelf. We're actually at the beginning stages of developing a tool that can meet the needs of our strategic plan. Um, so this is something that we're building together. Um, Shada, you mentioned that, two years, was it two years ago? It might have been more than that. It was at least two years ago.
It was three years ago.
That, that we visited Mesquite and, and had a look at what they call IO.
Yeah.
Which is this kind of a product, um, which was really on the, what I called a bleeding edge, right? So, so Dr. Bruneland is a visionary, and he had put something together and put this out before anybody else was doing anything like that. I chose not to be on the bleeding edge, because I don't like bleeding. Um, but I do wanna be on the cutting edge, because we have to be ready to make the transformation. That is gonna become, in fact, I think it's already become, uh, an urgent and imperative for us to make sure that we're making this transformation for our students. You've heard part of the reason why that Dr. Bruneland explained. Um, but I watched with interest what he developed in Mesquite. We've learned a lot of lessons from that process. Um, they're also developing this in other districts, so we're not the first by any means. Um, I have friends, I have a friend named Dr. Peanish in Belville ISD. It's a much smaller district than we are, but they've developed what is very similar to what we're about to, to build. That has both a positive, uh, uh, and a negative side to it. The positive side to it is, they've already had experience building some of this. Some of it's built already. We will use some of those exact same components, which they won't have to reinvent. Um, and that makes a lot of sense in this case. But it also is completely customizable to what our needs are. Because we are Leander ISD, we're completely different than Mesquite ISD, we're completely different than Belville ISD, or anywhere else that they're working. And we have to customize this tool to make sure that it works for us. And so, this truly has to become an ongoing, long-term partnership, that's developed between like-minded individuals, who really understand what this transformation looks like and, and then can really execute it in the long term.
Couple things, so, is a teacher able to pull, like, class-wide data, or is it only individual students?
Hi there. Uh, you will be able to class by student, by data, by group.
Okay.
By any, you can pull that data. And one of the great things about this tool, and one of the amazing things about school districts, is that you have amazing amount of data.
Yeah.
And getting it all in one place, so you can group it the way you want to and the way you need to, well, we can design it exactly how you want it.
So I'm thinking about PLCs and how they look at those heat maps. And then, you know, I'm thinking if they're pulling the map data and the ISIP data and all of that other stuff, all in one spot, I think that would be a very useful tool for our teachers. Um, and be able to allow them to see where, you know, they need to focus on which portions of the lessons and things like that. Okay, thank you for that. The next thing I have is, who sets this up? Like, who sets up the individual student profiles? Because I'm thinking about, if we're gonna be asking our teachers to do those individual student profiles, that's a lot of work.
We, we populate a lot of it, obviously, on the front end, and then create the framework for the student to go in and add their own data.
Okay, but I'm thinking about a kindergartner. A kindergartner can't do that on their own, right?
No, they can't.
So, so now, so now we're tasking our teachers with extra work, and I'm just thinking kind of out loud. And then the other piece of this is, like, when you talked about, that it's not packageable for, like, a senior to take with them.
Not yet.
Not yet. So when you say not yet, are we talking months? Are we talking years? Are we talking decade? What are we talking about?
Not a decade, for sure.
I'm asking, because as a senior kiddo, who's like, I want to apply to a college, and I wanna be able to take this data that I worked so hard to, to produce, and then I'm not able to do anything with it after that.
It is absolutely our intention to make this data portable, and to interface potentially with the Common App for university, or, you know, any number of other opportunities with, you know, businesses to create mentorships, to create internships, to any number of things is my deep aspiration here.
I mean, it should be able to, like, populate your Indeed profile. Like, your LinkedIn profile.
You're saying Indeed, but yes, Indeed, it would be Indeed.
Without getting too into the weeds on all of this, what I will say is that, yes, there is roadmap to making this portal. It is their portfolio, right? When it, when it, when a child starts kindergarten, works their way all the way through twelfth grade, at the end of twelfth grade, they should be handed their portfolio in some sort of digital format. That's all, definitely on the roadmap. It's not a decade from now, it's not, it, and it's, the nice thing about this type of an engagement, this type of a partnership, is that we will work hand-in-hand with you. Like, we're not gonna tell you what it does, you're gonna tell us what it does, and then we're gonna go and make it happen. That's the intent with all of this. That's why, you know, that's why the value of that compared to something you can buy off the shelf. It tells, is, when you buy it off the shelf, it tells you what you can do with it.
Right.
We're, we're flipping that to the exact opposite. You're gonna tell us what you want out of it, and we're gonna go and build that for you.
Thank you.
And, and just a reminder that this is about process and about journey, and not about product at the end, right? So this is not about the portfolio at the end, that the kid carries away. This is about the learning that that student does in order to create that portfolio, that, that, and it, and it's that experience, that learning, that they will take away with them, that is the most important thing, right? And so, yes, we're gonna create opportunities for them to be able to visualize that over time and do all kinds of things with their data. But as they learn how to do that, they take those skills with them, and those skills is what's gonna make all the difference.
And, and Bruce, thank you for saying that, because I think that's one of the most important takeaways for me, is that Bruce has taken some concepts that I hadn't thought about, and that's the nature of why you try to make it uniquely attached to districts, because they have concepts that are different perhaps than were your own. And that, that was something I insist on, but one of the things he talked about was exhibition of work, and creating a space by which your best exhibitions are there. And that puts students in a space of truly owning and being agents over their learning, and it, it creates an atmosphere that's different than just a portfolio. Because you can go buy a portfolio kind of concept anywhere, but attaching it to goals, attaching it to your, to your exhibitions, attaching it to your interests, those are, that's a different kind of experience altogether. One of the things I wanted to just touch on real quick, and I, I know we're probably close to the end, but I just think, one of your administrators did a task, similar to what you were talking about with the MAPS work and the, and the special ed data, and pulling all that in, and trying to create a heat map, and trying to understand what we do next as teachers in our PLCs. One of your administrators did a task to just identify the needs of one student in the system. They went through a task. Took them two hours. And this is what I mean when we say we've gotta get the, so whatever the PLC, if you say is a PLC, we wanna see a certain kind of outcome that is constant, that a teacher doesn't have to pull, that doesn't have to aggregate data to, but it's just there. You know, they don't have to disaggregate it, they don't have to bring it together, it's just there. That's our desire for you, but it would be Bruce and his team communicating to us, along with you, certain aspects as well. What is it you want this tool to do? And, and with respect to, to partnership, then, that does create a longstanding partnership. Because we wanna be there for all of this. We wanna help you iterate it over time. As you say, we want this tool to do this now, we wanna add this component to it, we wanna add a CTE component to it, right? So we're really doing some things around CTE, which is what another district's doing. It's, it's, it becomes the thing that is Leander. Not the thing that is Dave, not the thing that is Soft Choice. It becomes the thing that is Leander. And as the subject matter expert for this, this was super important to me. When, when I teamed with Soft Choice, they teamed around what I wanted to do with districts. Not, I didn't come to them and say, hey, what are you doing? Let me help you do it. It's, this, this was specifically my vision, working with districts and superintendents and understanding the uniqueness of districts.
So, my question's mainly for you. Um, are you working with Jason and his team to, um, on how they would normally go about making technology purchases? Looking at your requirements, and looking at multiple vendors, and, and, and things like that?
Jason, do you mind stepping up here, please, sir?
Jason.
Oh, wow. Wow.
It's the last, the last time I get to whisper, Jason.
I don't know what that was, Jason, but wow.
If you just call his name really softly, he shows up, it's magic.
Hi, good evening. So, we have been working with, uh, Soft Choice for, I don't know, probably the last year or so, giving them our requirements. Um, the employee that he was talking about was Emily Gray, you guys are all familiar with her. So, Bruce has a fantastic story on that. I don't know if he wants to share it now or later, but it, it really hits home on how long it takes the teachers to gather all the information and the data, so.
Does, does that help, Shada? He's, he's been in from the very beginning, I promise, and these guys can testify to that.
I'm sorry, it helps. I think, just kind of going to Gloria's question, it's about looking at multiple vendors before really honing in on one. That's, that's also the other point.
I think what we'll do is, we will bring you, um, the, the exercise that we did with this student, um, it's sanitized enough that I can bring it here and we can actually talk about it in public. And so, we'll, we'll bring you that exercise and show you just how difficult it is to gather all the information that's necessary to really make good human decisions about student outcomes, um, in the district. Despite the, the technology that we have, despite all of the advantages that we have, it still takes a long time, and it's very difficult to gather that data from multiple different sources.
I have a quick question. Is this something that would be able to interface with other apps? And when I say that, because if I'm thinking about it from my parent perspective, the thought of having one more app to keep track of one more thing gives me such anxiety, because I've got Google, I've got Band, I've got Sped, I've got Lunch Money, I've got T-shirt app.
Right.
You know, portals, like, half my phone is just school apps. So, just from the parent perspective, the thought of having to go to one more thing is kind of like, okay. And I, I love how this looks, and I love the way that it was presented, because so much of what we hear is, you know, you have to go back to basics, you have to go back to basics. The reality of that is, that doesn't exist anymore.
No.
The world that was, when I graduated high school, it doesn't exist, so that type of education won't work for my kids anymore. So I love the changing and the shifting into different aspects, but then also, as a parent, I have enough.
Oh, sure, sure.
I have enough apps.
I, I, you know, you, you, you put a superintendent in front of you, you should know that you have one, and you ask questions, you're gonna get long answers. Uh, but, uh, but, uh, it's, I'll, I'll share this just as a quick story to your point. When I was presenting this concept in Mesquite, I had a gentleman at one of my neighborhood meetings ask me a question, said, so, how's this gonna help my child? And I said, you know, because of all the changes that you just described. And so, sir, how old's your child? And he, and I said, and who are you? He introduced himself, he was a minister in town, his child was two. And I had other parents, like you, whose children are in high school, they're going, how's this gonna help my child? I want this information, like, now, right? And it's like, wow. Um, so, you, you can kind of see, there's a demand for what you're talking about, for parents to have access to information that really helps their child. At the same time, you wanna reduce some of the difficulty of accessing information. So one of the things we would look at is, working with Bruce, is how do we create a space by which we can, at a minimum, make it a one-stop shop for what you're looking for, and maybe remove an app or whatever, because we can do that? Or at least make it such that you can access the apps like a, like your children probably have through, I don't know if you have ClassLinks, you have some kind of LMS, where you can at least make it easy for a parent to go, oh, I go here, and it's boom, everything I need is here, you know, kind of concept. But we certainly can either through APIs, or through replacement, do things like that, yes.
So, I was getting to that story about the conversation with Emily. We have, let's say, ten, how many?
Sixteen.
Sixteen different things that a teacher would look at. We own all of that data. So to Tricia's point, we already have that data, but the problem is, it's very difficult for a teacher to see it all at once. It's probably sixteen different dashboards. They don't have the time to look at that for each student. And so what this will do is put it all on one, we call it like one pane of glass, one platform, it calculates it all, it puts it in graphs, pie charts, whatever. The exercise that Emily did, it showed data that, um, you know, some calculations that she did from looking at everything. It shows things that a teacher couldn't see immediately by looking at these different things separately. When it all gets put together, it opens up like some different, like, aha moments. So, that's what's special about it. We own the data, it's all gonna be in one place. So that's, that's the big, the big kicker here.
We will be able to integrate with multiple systems.
That was a short answer for what I just said.
All right, thank you so much, we really appreciate you coming out tonight.
Thank y'all, thank you. I think we're all still processing, and, and we'll have more questions. Thank you. Thank you.
So the last thing I'll say is that we're at the very beginning of this journey, um, and so, uh, we wanted to bring it to you before we even started, um, to make sure that, um, you were part of that process, and, and that you understand where we're going. And we'll be bringing you back lots more.
I think my, my concern is, I think part of that process is, let's, thinking through a timeline and some of the requirements. I, I still feel like there's a reason to do some type of, some type of RFP, because there's so many, everything that was presented of why we need something like this and all that, totally get that. And if I do a Google search, I can find like fifty companies, right, that also say that same thing and are offering that same service. And so I'd like to hear more, and that RFP-wise, tell me about school districts our size that you have worked with, right? Um, how much does this cost versus how much, you know, I, those are a lot of the questions that I wanted to ask, but I didn't feel comfortable doing them in that space. So I think before we get to a vendor doing a presentation, I'd want us to have a conversation about what are some of the things that we're looking for with that, and, and then getting to that point. Because I didn't feel like that was the space for me to be able to ask, like, okay, well, how much do you charge versus this one and this one? And I hear this school district is using this company, tell me why you're, but, you know, those are the, the conversations, or I guess the questions I would wanna ask you and Jason and, and, you know, other folks, just to, before I got to this point.
Got it, thank you.
Can, can I say, the only thing is, I do wanna also figure out how we do this well? Because I think it, it is a good question to ask, but I also wanna make sure, like, I don't wanna get to where we're like, in that way of, with vendor, that it can go, it can go, it can take a right, or a left instead of a right, and so, keep us out of all of that. Definitely, we don't wanna be in that.
But I felt like that didn't keep us out of that.
Right.
That was the opposite.
And I don't wanna be like, saying, well, this has to be an RFP, or this has to be an RFQ, or this has to be, I don't see that as board role. But I think your question is like, but I have a hitch in my giddy up, because I'm not, I'm not ready for that conversation, because I'm thinking of all this other stuff. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I felt like I was sitting in a one-hour vendor pitch, and, and saying that that isn't my role, that that isn't my place. And my place is, hey, did we do our due diligence in looking at all the different prospects, making sure it fits with our platform, looking at, you know, are they sustainable? How long have they existed? Are we gonna invest in this, and they're gonna go out of business into, all, you know, that's my role. My role isn't listening to a sales pitch. And so, that was my, my conflict there. I, and I totally appreciated the presentation part on why we need something like this, right? Because I, I, we have talked about that, and we want something like that. So I appreciated all that content, but I felt like that content was content that, that, on a more general basis, we know we need that. We know that we want that, we know we've talked about that. Um, but I think I would have almost wanted that from, from our people, right? Um, and this is what we're looking for, this is what we want, this is where we're at, these are the next stages. I just, like you said, I don't wanna get in the weeds of picking vendors and stuff, that's not my place, but I wanna make sure that we have a good process and that we're picking, you know, to pick a vendor. So, but, thank you. Okay, next agenda item, gonna move us on over to the legislative update, and we have a guest, so we are jumping a little bit here also, and that's six B1, and that is our legislative update.
Good evening. So, real quick, uh, do you wanna address Tuesday and talk a little bit about, um, the results of the election? Obviously, uh, that sort of begins giving us a better picture of the, the bodies we're gonna be working with, uh, coming next session. On the Senate side, uh, we had fifteen seats that were up. Uh, the makeup for the last legislative session was nineteen Republicans and twelve Democrats. That will now be twenty Republicans and eleven Democrats. There will be three new faces, um, in that Senate body. On the House side, we were at eighty-six, sixty-four last session. Uh, in this session, it will be eighty-eight, sixty-two, um, and there will be thirty-two new faces in that body. Um, I, I almost confused myself, because I said there was thirty, thirty-one freshmen, but there's thirty-two new faces, because we do have one member that served, I think, in the late eighties, that's, that is now coming back. So, uh, thirty-two new faces to us, for the most part, um, coming in this, this next legislative session. So lots of new folks to get to know and, um, you know, have a working relationship with. So, one thing I wanted to talk about is, next Tuesday is an important day in the legislative process. We have pre-filing, so they will begin filing bills. Um, if you've paid attention to the last two sessions, it's, uh, increased every time. I expect a, a large, uh, amount of bills to be filed in that first week, um, and probably the first couple of weeks. Uh, but one of the important things that I want you all to kind of think about is, as a part of that pre-filing process, we start to see sort of the themes, uh, for the legislative session take shape. Um, and then obviously, you know, the policy goals and priorities. There will be some original ideas, and then there'll be some ideas that are recycled There will be some original ideas, and then there'll be some ideas that are recycled over and over again, and so I think that's important to pay attention to. And for your community and for you all, uh, one tool you might consider checking into is Texas Legislature Online, uh, if you've never used that before, I highly recommend it, it's a great public free tool, uh, that allows you to track legislation, uh, and run reports. Um, obviously, the movement on those bills depends on a variety of factors, uh, that will happen later in the legislative session. I will tell you that there are a lot of folks working, uh, with Legislative Council at the moment, trying to get bills drafted and filed, uh, if you've paid attention to the last couple of sessions, uh, that's been a bit of an issue, because Legislative Council is down-staffing, just like everywhere else. Um, and so there are a lot of folks that are still waiting on bills that they've requested, um, some as much as eight, nine months ago. So, we'll see how that goes as we move through the session. One thing I wanted to speak on was the community meetings that we have coming up, uh, with regard to legislative priorities, I know Angela's setting those up. Just a couple of things I wanted you to kind of think about as we, we go through that, and sort of the purpose of those meetings is to hear from, you know, your various stakeholders within the community. You know, we obviously know about vouchers, we know ESAs, accountability, all these sort of broad topics that are gonna impact us, um, but we also know that we're gonna have collaborative partners in those areas as well, right? And so I think from my perspective, what's gonna be helpful for me, um, and for you all as well, is the specific issues that are specific to LISD, and what has the greatest impact to you all, um, your students, your teachers, your taxpayers, your parents, um, all those folks. And so I wanna, I wanna see, um, you know, those specific items and how that's gonna build the narrative for our legislative session as a team, um, and how we can ensure that our story is told and we get the, the maximum benefit from our legislative advocacy as we move forward. On the State Board of Education, I did wanna mention that they are gonna be adopting the EMRA materials in this next meeting, November. We do know that, obviously, we're still gonna be waiting for that updated EMAT system, I don't, I'm not sure what it's gonna be called, it may still be EMAT, but, um, and that will be at the beginning of next year, but they will adopt the, the newest round of materials, and this will be the first time that we've done this. So, just wanted to provide that brief update, and obviously, we have some new board members as well, um, and so we're gonna have a new body to work with there also.
It's a pretty limited adoption of EMRA, right? It's just a very narrow.
That's correct. I think that was purposeful, just because it's the first, first go-around.
Colby, I'm, I'm thinking about the next legislative session, and I feel like some of the conversations, it could almost feel like rinse, repeat, rinse, repeat, and that we've had these conversations over and over, over again on, on vouchers and ESAs, but there's so much, we need to talk about public school. And so it's like, all the oxygen gets taken out of the room to talk about vouchers and ESAs, and then, and then you're still like, "But we've got more, we've gotta talk about public school and the issues that are going on with public school." I'm curious, from your point of view, um, what would you say to a school board or trustees if, would it be advantageous to, instead of letting that take all the oxygen in the room, could we just tell them, "If you really want it, put it on the consti-, uh, put it as a constitutional amendment, let us vote on it, put it out to the public, and then I don't have to talk to you about this all the time, y'all, y'all ask the community, let's see what Texas really wants." Have you heard that conversation? Um, and then, can we talk about public education? What do you see our legislatures really wanting to do for the issues that we have here as far as funding, our security, our teachers, our classroom, supports and, uh, resources that we need?
Yeah, so that's obviously a strategy, right, is to, is to put it towards a constitutional amendment for, for the people to vote on. Um, we've seen that nationally as well. But, you know, I've told multiple clients now about letting vouchers, ESAs, whatever you wanna call them, soak up the oxygen in the room. You know, there's so many things we need to do for kids right now. Uh, and on the financial side, I, I'm hearing more and more, um, Democrats and Republicans talking about the need for more financial help in schools, funding. I'm also hearing lots of discussions about early literacy, I'm hearing lots of discussions about math, um, and sort of getting back to some of the academic discussions, um, that, you know, we really were having prior to last, last session as well. On school security, uh, I, most of the conversations that I've had, there's been a recognition that there's more to be done, um, and we need to be more proactive, uh, as a state in, in the way we handle those issues. So, I think there's a, there's a wide range of topics, and I think you're gonna see some of that in the pre-filing, um, and you're certainly gonna see some of it moving into next session. But the more conversations I have, especially with sort of, um, the past policymakers, um, obviously, the, the new folks will have some new, um, ideas and, and conversations, uh, but some of the folks that have been doing this for a while, some of the Republicans and Democrats, uh, have really sort of taken that stance of, we know where a lot of people are on ESAs and vouchers as a body, but what about these other issues? Um, and so I think that's important, we gotta continue to have those conversations, whether we agree or disagree, um, and figure out exactly where we can all come together for kids. Uh, and I think that's, uh, I am hopeful that that's happening at this moment.
I would like to ask if you have heard if there's any intention at all from the legislature with the pile of unfunded mandates that's coming topped off by vouchers and all the curriculum changes and accountability changes, is there any intention from the legislature to involve actual educators in the process?
There, there are some legislators that have, um, said that they would like to hear more from educators, um, and maybe less from statewide policymakers, um, but there's still a, a large number, there's still a large number that are gonna rely on the agency as well as legislators, um, and, and those types of individuals to sort of make the decision.
And then any discussion about, uh, working on the, the recommendations from the Teacher Vacancy Task Force?
Yeah, and, and I think you're gonna see maybe some of that referenced in some of the interim committee reports when they come out. They're, they're, you know, I've heard multiple legislators now make the, the argument that we really didn't do, well, anything from that report. So I, I think they recognize that, um, and, and when I say some legislators, I mean some legislators that have, that are in leadership positions. You know, I think, eh, there's, there is a recognition, a widespread recognition that the compensation for teachers is obviously lacking, uh, as well as some of the work environment issues, unfunded mandates, those sorts of things, um, that need to be addressed as well. So, I, I will say again, on this aspect, I'm hopeful, um, I think there's, there's, there's clearly a recognition there, for sure.
Is it fair to say too, that although it didn't make it over the finish line, a lot of those recommendations did make it into legislation, it's just that they didn't really?
That's right. Um, and then, you know, obviously, the, the big piece of legislation in that fourth special session, fourth special session, I think, but, uh, of House Bill One, which also had the ESA that ultimately went down, there were a lot of, a lot of tools in there, um, that, that included some of that, um, of that report, yeah.
Yeah, and, and then what I hear is that, that seems to be the starting point is House Bill One for, certainly on the House side, I think Chairman Buckley certainly is interested in starting there, at least the conversation.
Yeah, I think, I think there's a lot of House members that, that wanna start, um, at that level, and only go up from there.
So, just one last thing, are you done?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, I have been invited to, uh, give testimony to the Senate Committee on Higher Ed on Monday, um, and a very narrow issue of, um, APIB and dual credit, and the way that those, um, credits transfer to higher education, um, and so I, I will be at the Capitol on Monday.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions or updates? All right, no other questions, but I, thank you, Cody, appreciate it. All right, next, we're gonna move on over to Item Six C1, which is the Bond Oversight Committee Recommendations. And I believe we also have a guest for this one as well.
Good evening, Madam President, Member of the Board, Dr. Gearing. I am joined tonight by John Lux, and John serves as the Chairperson for the Bond Oversight Committee, and John's gonna run through a presentation to highlight a couple of, of projects and recommendations for your consideration that came out of the October twenty-second Bond Oversight Committee meeting. So, John, I'm gonna hand it over to you.
Congratulations to the reelections. Congratulations for your reelections. Hold on. Uh, again, as I always mentioned, we're here tonight for the Bond Oversight Committee, we've got two proposals that we're gonna bring tonight, so we'll just go ahead and, and jump in. Uh, even though it says technology, we're, the next slide's gonna show vehicles, not that it's a mistake, it's just, it's the vehicles to support technology, so. Okay, so you see these, we've got two vehicles, or three vehicles, the two Ford and the, and then a box, and you can see on the ages, the two thousand eight, two thousand nine, obviously, they're way beyond their life expectancy, and trying to get parts for them is almost nearly impossible. Um, so, we're looking at, uh, project savings to go ahead and replace these three vehicles, uh, two of the Ford vans, which you see down below, is are used for, to support the IT staff, the different campuses, and then the box truck for the numerous laptops and IT equipment that needs to be transferred, uh, around the, the district. So the Bond Oversight Committee unanimously approved to reallocate one thousand nine hundred and twenty, ninety, one hun- one thousand, one hundred and ninety-two thousand, ninety-eight dollars of two thousand seventeen bond project savings to be used to purchase three white fleet vehicles. Again, those are the two box, uh, two vans and one box truck, um, and that's our recommendation. Uh, and again, it was unanimous, and I don't know if there, uh, wasn't a lot, I mean, there was a discussion, kind of just, again, as always is brought up by the committee of, you know, uh, you know, is there other things that maybe these bond project savings could go to? But again, because of the age of these vehicles and the need for, um, to, for the IT department to be able to get the equipment around the district, uh, it was becoming a challenge.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve the reallocation of one hundred and ninety-two thousand, ninety-eight dollars from two thousand seventeen bond project savings to be used to purchase the replacement of two white fleet vans and one box truck for information technology services.
I second. Francesca makes motion, Christine seconds. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion, all those in favor? Seven in favor, the motion passes.
All right, now transportation. Just a little bit of a background for this one, uh, it's a replacement for the fuel tanks in the northern section. Again, as you can see, the age of the tank, is, tanks are over twenty years old, and so they've gotten to beyond their, their expected life, and then also they've failed inspections, so they can't be used. So, what's happening is you're having to take the buses to the other fueling stations, obviously takes time and effort and so forth, so, um, again, using project savings, it was a recommendation, uh, of the staff to the Bond Oversight Committee to go ahead and reallocate those project savings to replace these, uh, fuel tanks. And again, the current ones are underground, the new ones will be above ground and, and so forth, and, and, uh, it even looked into, uh, any kind of mitigation, 'cause again, another thing is, if these do remain in the ground and they do leak, you can imagine the, the Texas Department and so forth, and the fines and so forth would just be astronomical, so the staff's getting out ahead of, ahead of this to get these replaced, and then, again, have a, a fueling station back up north again, I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to add, or?
Yeah, I will highlight that this, this project, um, was under consideration with the, the CFAC and through the development of the two thousand twenty-three bond. It did not make it past that review onto the two thousand twenty-three bond. There are some things that have been done and repairs. One recent, um, issue was when they fuel, fill these tanks up with fuel, it builds pressure, and just some of the release valves weren't functioning correctly, and this is, has to be done every single year, and so beyond just the condition of the tanks itself, just the components built in there, um, are failing, and that's what has led, um, to moving all the fueling up north. And so I did wanna highlight that this project has come up before, and now we're just at the point where we have to do something, and why we went to the Bond Oversight Committee, um, to, to try to, to find a way to, to implement these projects and get these tanks replaced.
I, I really appreciate the work that the Bond Oversight Committee's done on this, I also see that you have some other funds that you've put with it to be able to make this happen. I, I think you're using the resources wisely, I think y'all have done a good job, I'm glad you're addressing it. We did get fines for this before, and we don't need to be wasting dollars like that. The only thing I have, and you know about this, is that I asked about this when CFAC did have it down there, and I reached out to the office and said, "Should we move this up?" And I was told it did not need to be moved up. Um, and that bugs me a bit, because I would've rather had that on the bond, because when we keep spending on these funds, and this is a good chunk of change and for a valid reason, then what are we gonna do later if we need funds in different areas? I mean, we have a lot of repurpose, we have a lot of other bond projects, whether it's facility optimization, repurpose, or academies of innovation, we'll figure all that out in another discussion, but those are big construction projects. And so I see like, y'all are gonna have to be making discussion, or making decisions on possibly other funds that we might need, and so when we encumber funds, that I think, man, if we just had thought a bit ahead, we wouldn't have had to encumber them this way. I'm just gonna ask for your office to be really intentional when CFAC goes, um, let's just m- make sure that, um, I don't know, we do another check, or somehow we, when, when Board Trustees reach out about that, we make sure we know that that's not needed, 'cause really, I, we asked about that, I don't think I was the only Board Trustee, I'm, I'm hearing some ah-hahs over here, 'cause I think other trustees did too. So, but thank you all for what you're doing, absolutely.
And that was, that was a lengthy discussion that we also had about how, uh, we as the Bond Oversight Committee can help, you know, so as we present more down, these allocations down, we're gonna bring out the fact, this could've been taken care of before, but it wasn't, so that brings up some more visibility to, to exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah, I think also, just to highlight is, sometimes you do have projects that may fall within a bond cycle, and there may be opportunities there to try to defer, right? There, and then those don't, those opportunities, those solutions may not get you to, bridge you to the next, um, bond, and so you're left in a situation like this. You also don't know what type of rebates and savings are we gonna get, say, on school buses. We are able to realize a tremendous amount of savings because of transportation and just how they packaged the, those purchases, that funding this project is gonna come from dollars that were saved, right? Just from rebates themselves, so we're still able to accomplish that project and then some, and then include that, but, um, I totally agree, and, and how we communicate some of these needs in the future, we need to make sure, um, to attach a priority to those and identify those to the committee who is evaluating them at that time.
And just as one other point, is when I make the recommendation here, it talks about the bond, uh, the bus replacement bond project, the reason that those, those funds are available is because of the, the staff doing outstanding work of, of getting grants for propane buses and so forth, and that, so this, their work that they did was, they save this eight hundred thousand dollars in the, in the work that they do, so this is where that comes out of that bond replacement. So the Bond Oversight Committee unanimously approved to move eight hundred thousand of that two thousand twenty-three bus replacement bond project to the two thousand twenty-three bond project savings fund, will take, will then be reallocated to the new central transportation facility fuel tank replacement project. Mouthful, but.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve the reallocation of eight hundred thousand dollars of the two thousand twenty-three bus replacement bond project to the two thousand twenty-three bond project savings fund, which will then be reallocated to a new central transportation facility fuel tank replacement project.
I second. Francesca makes motion, Christine seconds. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion, all those in favor? Seven in favor, the motion passes.
All right.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lux.
All right.
We appreciate your volunteering and serving on this committee for us.
Certainly, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna take a ten-minute break, it's currently eight nineteen, let's just say it's eight twenty, and we'll be back at eight thirty. Let's just say it's 8:20, and we'll be back at 8:30.
Hello? Oh, there we go. It's 8:30, and we are back from break, and we are going to move over to Item 682, which is our Annual Counseling Services Update.
Good evening, Board Members and Dr. Gearing. Tonight, we come to you for our Annual Counseling Services Update, and our presentation is going to look a little different than in previous years, so less numbers, less data, and more examples of the daily work that our department does on a day-to-day basis. So, to that point, we've invited some guests with us. We have our, some elementary counselors, middle school counselors, high school counselor. So, you'll see us shifting and moving and changing seats, so please be patient with that. And so, we hope you're able to see the work that we do and get a little glimpse of the daily work of a school counselor. So, as you know, all of our work in Leander ISD is grounded in support of our guiding documents. And in Counseling Services, we love the core beliefs, because it focuses on the student, students first. We also support the work for our students to achieve the ideals of the graduate profile, and while we feel like we support all areas of those, we, especially tonight, want to focus on how we work to help our students become adaptable, reflective individuals, and who embrace their strengths and pursue their interests. Okay, this is difficult to have be left-handed to. So, we also want to highlight our work to implement the strategic plan, and tonight, we're going to focus on empowered student learning and impactful family engagement. So, before we jump into the fun stuff, you have to sit through my boring portion. We want to share a quick review of the staff who comprise the Counseling Services Department. So, on the school counseling side, we have 104 staff members, and on the student family support team, we have 15 therapists, who are either licensed clinical social workers or licensed professional counselors. And of course, you have myself, the Director, and our coordinators, Bethany McPhail and Haley Simmons. This photo is our new, the new counseling staff we hired this year, and two areas that we're very proud of is our support for our new counselors, as we have our new-to-profession and new-to-district counselors. We're very proud of that. We're also very proud of our aspiring school counselor program. We're in our third year, so we've had two cohorts go through. And in this photo of our new staff, you'll, four of them have gone through the aspiring school counseling program. Overall, we've, in our two years, our two cohorts, we've hired 10 people who have gone through that cohort, or that program. We also have one of these individuals who is a campus-based social worker, who is with us for a full year internship experience. And so, you can see, we're committed to growing our own and supporting our staff and students, and our staff and other individuals who want to go into the profession. On this slide, you see our school counseling ratios, and while high school remains somewhat consistent, there is a little bit of a fluctuation in our elementary and middle schools, not just due to growth and some rezoning. But you will also, I think it's important to point out, that at the elementary level, those ratios can range from anywhere around 450 to 1, to maybe closer to 840 to 1, depending on the campus. So, as required by Senate Bill 179, we continue to track our counselor use of time. And just, I want to say, this remains fairly consistent over the years that we track this. We do, our non-counseling rates have remained, as a whole, under the 20% threshold, which is required by the law. But if we do have a specific counselor or a campus where this is approaching, or maybe going over that, we work with the campus staff and to problem-solve and seek ways to bring that and remedy that. So, we do, we have weekly submissions on that.
Can you clarify that there are some campuses that might, that's an average, the 11%, so you do see where some campuses will go over? When that happens, then you talk to them. Do you know how many campuses have that?
Last year, I think we had three middle schools who had some areas, but there's, so we've worked with them and to help bring that down.
Excellent. And 11%, that's pretty steady.
Yes.
Do you see on average that ever coming down? Are we kind of like, is that where we're expected to stay? Is that, are you all happy with that? Are we good?
I think for myself, I think, I always say we have to get kids in the door and out of the door safely, and if that requires every individual on that campus to help get kids in the door and out the door, and if you have to do a little bit of a duty, or I get concerned about non-counseling duties, if someone is spending hours in the lunchroom just monitoring students instead of working one-on-one with a student or in small group, or, that's really the bulk of it, is like lunchtime duty. It's typically at some of our middle school campuses, just that's where it is. But, we're blessed that our elementary counselors don't do that as much. So, David. Okay, so now, we want to share with you what this use of time looks like on a daily basis. So, we're going to begin with our Reed Elementary counselors, Mr. Alicia Gonzalez-Aiken and Clarissa Cavasso.
Good evening, Board Members and Dr. Gearing and everybody else here. My name is Alicia Gonzalez-Aiken, and this is Clarissa Cavassos, and we are the dual-language school counselors at Reed Elementary. And we are here today to share with you some aspects of our school counseling program and how they promote success at our school. I'll begin with guidance lessons. So, as school counselors, we do deliver guidance lessons to all grade levels once a month. The purpose of the guidance lessons is to help students develop skills that will support their social, emotional, academic, and career growth. We follow a guidance curriculum, and this curriculum is aligned with the ASCA and Texas model. And some of the topics that we do include in our lessons are introduction to the school counselor, we work with personal safety, coping skills, and college and career awareness. We also offer small group counseling for our students, and we meet with a small group of grade-level students to provide personalized interventions to improve skills in the areas of social, emotional, and academic. For this, we do need parent permission. It is required for the students, for the parents to sign a form, and some of the topics include social skills, friendship building, and healthy study habits. And of course, we have more, but these are just a few. We also offer informal group gatherings. This is a little bit different than small group counseling, because for this, we just meet, pretty much it's casual interactions with kids, and it's during their lunchtime. This is just to build friendships, socialize, spend time together. The kids really like it. They like to come to the counselors and spend time with us. After meeting with the students, we do send home a note, just notifying parents that we met with them, and that they requested to have lunch with us. Parent communication. Communication is the key to success. Reed is a dual-language campus, therefore, we communicate with families both in English and in Spanish. Our counselor newsletter is shared with our principal, and she shares with parents every Friday on her weekly newsletter. We also post our guidance lessons on our counseling website, along with other important information, or things that we're working around the semester time. Right now, we are very excited. We are in the process of implementing a new two-country committee, and the committee is made up of teachers and other staff members, and also, obviously, us, Ms. Cavassos and I. And the purpose of the committee is to help new immigrant families access resources, support and improve the education and well-being of their students. So, now, this is Ms. Cavassos, and she's going to talk to her about her transition from being a second-grade teacher at our campus to now being our counselor.
Hi. So, good evening, Board Members, Trustees, and Dr. Gearing. As Alicia said, I am Clarissa Cavassos, and this year, I had the privilege of making the transition from a second-grade teacher to a school counselor at Reed. My only regret was not doing it sooner. It really was the best decision that I have made. I can honestly say that this transition has been seamless, because of all the support I received from Steve, Bethany, Haley, my admins, and the entire Leander ISD School Counseling Department. It really has been just a smooth ride. As a new-to-profession counselor, I was given a fabulous mentor, Alicia, that I get to work alongside. I also get to meet with the Great Counseling PLC, so we meet once a month. In addition to that, along with myself, other new-to-professions, we have new-to-profession meetings, where we meet with other new counselors, and we also get to collaborate with some of our more tenured counselors. And I've just really gained a lot of experience just from them. Another thing I can say honestly is that with sincerity, the counseling department at Leander has really set me up for success, and I know it's kind of the same feeling with the other counselors around. One aspect that I'd really like to highlight right now is how easily it's been for me to integrate second-step curriculum into my guidance lessons. As a former teacher, I do know, I mean, the time constraint to teach anything is so little, so I think for me, partnering, collaborating with our teachers, I'm able to kind of just piggyback off what they're teaching and reinforce those skills that second-step teaches. For example, learning strategies, how to empathize, building emotional regulation, and problem-solving together. So, by us working together, the kids hear the same vocabulary in my guidance lessons and in their classroom. We are just, you know, really preparing our students for academic and social success. So, I'm just looking forward to continue working alongside Alicia. So I'm just looking forward to continue working alongside Alicia and the Leander ISD Counseling Department, growing our counseling program at Reed. A lot of great things to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're going to turn it over to Bethany.
Say, we did not tell them they had to say nice things about us, but we appreciate it. Good evening, Dr. Gearing and Board of Trustees. I come tonight not only as a member of the counseling team, but a proud high school band parent. Just have to throw that in there. Love our bands. So before we move on to Ask Four Points Middle School and Leander High School to share about their work, we wanted to highlight the importance of the fifth to sixth and eighth to ninth transition years. Our goal is for every student across our system to have a similar experience, no matter what school they attend. We really want our students and families to feel confident and set up for success as they move to the next level in their education. As a part of that transition process, students in fifth grade complete a cost, a guidance lesson with their counselor, and they take a trip to visit the middle school. And I can assure you that eating lunch at the middle school is always the best part of that visit for the students. Once students have time to learn about all the middle school course options, and discuss their personal interests with their families, then our middle school counselors go to the elementary schools and help students complete their course request. Many years ago, we used to do that all in the visit, and we realized very quickly that was too much, and was very overwhelming, and so we have changed that process over the years. And it is much nicer and much smoother, I think, for everyone to give some time in that process. The middle schools also offer camps in the summer to welcome those new students to their campus. They practice opening locks if they need to, they find their lockers, they tour the campus, they really want to make the students feel welcome to their campus. The eighth to ninth transition also includes visits, personal interactions with their counselors, and opportunities to engage with their families. And Melissa is going to tell you more about that, what that actually looks like, in a few minutes. So a large part of the work that our secondary counselors do with students is supporting their ownership of their learning and their future plans. Naviance is one of the tools that we use with middle school and high school students to support that work. Naviance is a comprehensive college and career readiness program that allows students to explore their interests and their learning styles while connecting them to possible career opportunities. Our goal is for students to learn about themselves, take courses that align with their interests, and then really feel confident about their post-secondary plans. We've been very intentional about the usage of Naviance the last few years, adding opportunities for students, students every year. Last year, we opened it up to our middle school students. It was the first time we used it with them. And one of our areas of growth this year is adding the parent account portion, so giving parents access to Naviance themselves. We want to ensure that we're really bringing parents into that conversation and doing that future planning with their students. So I had the opportunity to share about Naviance last week with the Community Curriculum Advisory Committee, and request their feedback on Naviance and what that would look like for parents, and just really hear from them, if they had any feedback for us on how that we could do that really well. So their feedback was really positive, and will help us to launch the parent accounts in a very meaningful and hopefully smooth process for parents. So based on that feedback, we will be including discussion questions for parents to guide that conversation. That was one of the big things that they shared with us, that if you could give us questions to talk with our students, that would be really helpful. So now, I'm going to turn it over to our fantastic counselors at Four Points, and they're going to share a little bit about their work with family engagements.
Good evening, Dr. Gearing and Board. I'm Tanya Wake. I'm one of the two counselors at Four Points Middle School.
Hi, my name is Fazila Siddiq. I'm the other counselor at Four Points Middle School. Thank you for having us today. This evening, we are going to share about family engagement on our campus. So as we continue to work together towards creating an inclusive and supportive environment, learning environment for our students, we believe it's very important to recognize the crucial role that families play in our school community. One of our campus counseling goals this year is to foster a positive relationship with our families. Family engagement is not just a cornerstone of student success, it is also a key to building a connected school culture. I would like to highlight some of the initiatives that we have implemented this year so far, that we are going to use to strengthen our partnership with families and to ensure the student's success and potential is being supported at school and at home. So one of the initiatives that we took this year was hosting a parent workshop night that we called "Navigating the Middle." Some of the topics, this was in conjunction with the admin team and the instructional team. So some of the topics included grading system, attendance, communication between parents and the school, and families, resources for mental health and academic support, technology, and home access center, and Google Classroom. Our target audience for this event specifically were parents that are new to middle school, parents new to Leander ISD, as well as parents new to the country. We provided translation services for our non-English speaker families, and we created one-pager for all topics that we covered, both in English and Spanish, so the families could take those home. This information is now also available on our website, on our school website. Next, we are hosting quarterly coffee talks. We are in the process of sending surveys to our families, so they can give us feedback on the issues that they would like to discuss. We will invite parents to, to school and come, you know, so they can come and have an open dialogue with us. From time to time, we will invite experts in the field to be part of the dialogue, so they can share their professional insight on the issue that we are talking ahead. The purpose of this is to have a place for counselors and for families to get together and discuss and have an open dialogue regarding issues pertaining to students and, and our schools. We are also planning to invite parents for career talks with our students, so we can continue to foster a positive relationship.
So in addition to the special activities and events, we also have some ongoing outreach programs, including our counseling section of our building campus newsletter. In that, we include district initiatives like the Empowered Parents Website, Social Emotional Learning, Adolescent Development and Parenting Information, Mental Health Topics, and Drug and Alcohol Prevention Information. We also highlight each week our advisory mini-lesson, which are based, mini-lessons which are based off our Mental Health Minute videos that we, we utilize. Our community is a very caring and generous one, and is willing to help others whenever needed. So in conjunction with our PTA, we've created the Falcon Assistance Network, Falcon is our mascot, to help families who have a specific need with families who want to help. So this might look like a pair of new sneakers for a student who wants to be on the cheer team but can't afford shoes, or a food donation for a family that has had a recent job loss. We, as counselors, coordinate those matches and donations so that it remains anonymous for all the parties involved. Our Falcon Assistance Network is a great atneed addition to our other services, which include our Campus Care Closet, which is a food and toiletries pantry, which is stocked by the PTA and our student organizations. It's available to students and families whenever they have a need. And we collaborate with our PTA to provide Thanksgiving mealboxes, as well as other holiday resources. We're always looking for ways to draw our families into our awareness months. So for example, we recently invited families, the community, and the media to participate in our Chalk the Walk Messages of Hope Sidewalk Art Display, which fortunately didn't rain, so it lasted a really long time. That was great. But the students created these beautiful works of art, and during our Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in September, and, and the newspaper did a great job of photographing that and interviewing the students. We also partner with other campus initiatives, and we're especially excited about our principal, Mr. Crawford's All Pro Dads and All Pro Moms programs, which meet once a month at the school. The programs create opportunities for parents and their students to discuss character-building and other topics with their child at school. They meet before school and have breakfast. And it also gives an opportunity to promote two-way communication and collaboration between the school and families. We still have a lot of work to do. For example, we really want to be more effective in communicating and connecting with and involving our non-English speaking families, and so we're actively seeking ways to do that, and we'll be visiting with the Reed folks more about that. So in summary, we are working hard to foster an environment where all families feel welcome and empowered to participate and advocate for their children. We're also committed to impacting our campus culture and providing the best possible outcomes for students possible through community engagement and collaboration. Thank you.
So now we'll turn it over to Melissa Wood, who is our lead counselor from Leander High School.
Good evening, Dr. Gearing and Board members. I'm Melissa Wood, as Mr. Clark just said. I'm the lead counselor at Leander High School, and I'm a one on a team of six. Here to share with you some of the great work that we've been able to accomplish over the past few years with our feeder pattern, and how our students are engaged in taking ownership of their learning. As you can see here on the graphic, our feeder pattern of Leander Middle School and Running Brushy Middle Schools, we are partnering to better prepare our students for high school and beyond. With this graphic, you're able to see students taking ownership of their learning through a number of facets. So starting in October and running through February, students are completing interest inventories in Naviance. They're also receiving guided lessons with both the middle school and high school counselors at the middle schools. We also include high school campus visits to the high schools, so that they can preview the various programs that are offered. This year, that is going to be on February 6th for all middle schools and high schools. And then, students are then, incoming freshmen are then able to complete their course requests, and those are also confirmed with a one-on-one conversation with their high school counselor, with the final culminating activity, for Leander's feeder pattern being a freshman orientation, also known as Lion Camp. As a feeder pattern, we were able to be more purposeful with our middle school counselors guiding students through the process of what to expect in high school. Where the first steps are for the students to complete a career interest profiler. As you can see here, students are able to discover, or rather uncover, their Holland traits. This is what we would all refer to as a Myers-Briggs Inventory when we were in school. Once students identify their top four Holland traits, they are then able to explore the career fields that these traits align with. This piece is important, because these career fields ultimately will align with the endorsements and programs of study offered at each of the high schools. Middle school counselors also use this information and are then able to use the program of study resource, district resource, as a way to help the middle school students find their chosen pathway and high school courses. Next, thank you. As you can see here, we put a great deal of emphasis on the endorsement and program of study components at the middle school level, simply because the students will then formulate and develop their high school four-year plan. Picture on the right of the screen here, we were recently at Leander Middle School, where we were able to walk them through the career interest profiler and talk them through their four Holland traits, and how those aligned with future career paths. Our goal as counselors is to be able to better equip our students for what's next. And our programs of study provide students with the tools they'll need to be successful in their chosen career path. By developing a complete high school four-year plan, knowing that things can change and do change, the students then have a pathway to follow, potentially leading to practicum classes that allow for students to gain valuable, hands-on, real-world experiences. Last year, LHS decided to become again reinforcing the purpose in connecting students with their areas of interest, and we provided them with a Google form, where they were able to select four of their chosen areas. And so prior to eighth grade visit day, again, on February 6th this year, students will be asked to select four programs that they would like to preview when they visit the high school. These four programs would align, coming full circle, with the career interest profiler and their four-year planning in Naviance. When the students come to the high school, they will be broken up into their program of study groups, where they are then able to go into the classrooms, actively participate, and preview those programs that they have selected, with the hopes of solidifying their elective choices, also known as our programs of study. These different aspects of empowered student learning were so beneficial last year, that we've already started the process with both LMS and our BMS eighth graders this year. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Melissa. Appreciate that. So now we're going to transition into, with Haley Simmons, our coordinator for Student Family Support Team, and she's going to talk a little bit about their work. And just as a quick reminder, these are licensed therapists who are governed by the Texas Behavioral Health Executive Council, and before any student participates in their services, we must have consent from our parents.
Okay, my close. Good evening, Dr. Gearing and Board members. Last year, our team came together to create our mission statement, which outlines the goals for our services and our values. I think we're all aware that mental health care is very hard to access, so of particular importance to our team is removing barriers, so our students and families can access high-quality mental health care that is individualized to meet the unique needs of each student that we work with. Okay, thank you. Every year, we continue to see an increase in our referrals. On October 25th, we had 622 referrals. As we sit here tonight, that's become 690 referrals, so we are on pace to exceed our numbers from last year. Over the past two years, we've seen an increase in students immigrating from many different countries, and many of these students and families are fleeing their home countries due to war and other unsafe conditions. Oftentimes, these students don't speak English, and they are learning to navigate a new way of life, while simultaneously trying to process the trauma, grief, and loss they've experienced. So last year, we created this one-page document outlining the services we offer, and we had it translated into multiple different languages, so our new-to-country families can feel seen and know that we're here to help them. This resource is available to the public on our Empowering Parents website, and we will likely continue to add to that as our population needs change. We have found that our families are open to receiving our support as they're learning to build trust in their school community. This year, we have begun offering therapy services with interpreters in different languages, such as Ukrainian and Haitian Creole. We're extremely proud to offer these highly specialized services, and grateful for the trust that these families have placed in us. With permissions from guardians, I'm going to share some sand tray work that was done by some students this year in their therapy sessions. The content of these sessions is powerful and could be triggering for some, so please care for yourself as needed. During these sessions, the therapist asks the student to create their world. This allows the student to engage with the miniatures and place them in the sand tray in a way they feel comfortable with. The therapist simply observes and maintains that the student is still remaining regulated as they navigate through processing thoughts and feelings around really difficult events in their life. Once the student has completed their sand tray, the therapist invites them to share by saying, "Is there anything you'd like me to know about your world?" From there, the student is able to share as they feel comfortable. So I'd like you to focus on the sand tray on the left. This was made by a student who had a change in guardianship due, due to his mother's substance use issues. His mom is the red figure, laying, laying down, surrounded by the things that make her that way. The white figure is the child with his family members surrounding him, attempting to take down the things that make mom that way, and rescue her with the lifeboat. The buried figure by the boat is the source of her addiction, which never dies. Each week, this student has used the sand tray to express his chronological experience of what he's been through these last three years. He told his therapist, "I enjoy being able to use this sand tray, because it's really hard for me to talk about these things, but I want you to know what's going on." The sand tray on the right was created by an elementary student who fled a war-torn country. The gravestone is representative of the immense loss the student has suffered. The student is playing with her sibling whom she's been separated with and misses dearly. The dogs are representative of the animals that she had to leave behind, some of whom have died. The abundance of groceries seen highlight her past issues with food and securities after living in a war zone, and behind her, you'll see a treasure chest, which in earlier sessions was hidden to protect her valuables. The vicious characters are representative of the lack of felt safety she felt during the war, and the lingering threat of harm as she continues to work to adapt to life in a new country. During this session, the student was able to process some of her feelings about her grief and loss for what she has had to leave behind. This 45-minute therapy session is the only time in her school day where she is able to speak to an adult in her native language. You can see the power of the work being done here. Every guardian that we work with has the opportunity to fill out a satisfaction survey upon completing our services, and today I wanted to highlight some of the feedback we've been given. My husband and I believe that our SFSD therapist saved our daughter's life. Our daughter would not have been able to return to school if it was not for her and others. She met with her weekly, and to our surprise, our daughter opened up. She does not always do- She does not always do this with anyone, just anyone, and we're grateful and blessed that our daughter felt safe enough to open up to her during the weekly sessions. She is a blessing to our entire family, and we could never thank her enough. We absolutely love our SFSD therapist. She was a lifesaver to our student and provided a light during a very dark time in our lives. The tools she taught our daughter are so valuable and one she will continue to use throughout her life. Our team is extremely proud to be planting seeds that will allow the students to work, the students we work with, to grow and flourish in the future. I think the world of this program, and I feel so fortunate to live in a district that offers this to families. And just as these guardians are grateful for our team, we feel as equally grateful to share space with them and walk with these students and families on their healing process. Thank you, Dr. Gearing, board members, Leaf, and all of Leander ISD for the immense amount of support you show our team and the dedication you have to improving the mental health of our students and families.
So yesterday was the first opportunity that we all got together and could do this run-through, and when Haley finished, I had an oh heck moment of how do I transition to the college fair after hearing that? And our team reminded me that that is a glimpse into the life of a school counselor and a mental health therapist in our buildings, is that one moment you're sitting there having a very intense conversation with them, a student, or maybe their family or both, and then the next moment, you may be talking to them about GPA courses or post-secondary planning. And I think as counselors, we have to remind ourselves that no matter what brings a student to our office, that that is the most important question for that student of that day, regardless of what we think of their question. And so, but we do want to end tonight as we see the full spectrum from elementary, middle to high, to highlight our college fair that was held at Glenn High School for the first time ever. And having this event at a new venue for the first time, I was unsure if people would come to a new location, but as you can see, we had a tremendous amount of people there. And so, I hope to continue to have a Glenn. Melissa was there with us, and we got everyone out of there, and all those tables broken down, and the cafeteria tables back by 8:30. And so, a very big success. So at this time, we are happy to take any questions or comments from you.
So I had a question on slide seven, the ratio. So, of course, so we know we have some elementaries that are over 800. We have some elementaries that have 400 kids. That experience that those kids are getting are two different experiences at two different schools, so what are we doing to help support those counselors at those campuses with over 600 kids? And I mean, there's over 13, so what are we doing to help them? To, one, with the extra caseload of students, right? Like, what kind of support are they getting?
Yeah, Bethany probably leads that a little bit better than me because she's got more of an elementary focus, but she meets with, so one of my goals for our team is to be out on our campuses more frequently this year, and so, she's able to be out with her, primarily our elementary, more than myself, and she's, you know, she meets with him quite frequently to talk about issues that they're seeing, how we can support them, and I do want to point out that if a campus is 850 or above, they should get a second counseling position, so yes.
That was my next question. At what point does that, what's that special number to trigger? Because I feel like we've got quite a few that are hovering around there, and like my campus in particular, like I'm wondering, at what point do we step in and we realize that that counselor is going to need extra assistance?
We do, so right now, the number for an elementary school is 850, gets a second position, and so, I think we have some who might be approaching that right now, so.
So as I look at these numbers, this is the average.
This is the average.
So I may have an elementary school with one counselor that has 400, and then I have another elementary that has 840 students-
Correct.
-and has one counselor.
Correct. Now, they might also, just to verify, they do have our SFSD team that can support on the mental health side, they don't do the school counseling piece, so they're not totally alone, but yes, that there is a big spread.
I think for me, I'm just looking at the student experience, right? If you've got a caseload of, I shouldn't say caseload, if you've got 400 students in a school, correct, that counselor is going to be able to get that direct service and have more time and really build those relationships with students, as compared to someone who's got over 700 kids, and they're still trying to create that same experience and give students what they need, and they're not getting it. And so, I think for me, I want to have a deeper, not tonight, promise, I want to have a deeper conversation on this because it creates an inequity across the district. That's, I'm just going to call it for what it is. And so, you know, as a parent with a kid at a campus with higher enrolled, I want my student to be able to have that same experience and that same experience as someone at a campus with 400, 500 kids. So I want to have that conversation, I know not tonight, but that's just something I want to start, I'm going to start coming, talking more about that.
Happy, yes, thank you.
No, I like that question because, and I think there's something more to that as well, because like, we've seen it where, I don't know, there's a campus in the north that got extra teachers, and they're like, "Oh, why did the campus in the north get extra teachers?" I mean, there's this question about how is this allocation going, and so I feel like if we're more informed and educated, we have capacity, then we'll be better able to have these discussions. And I do like, I do like to see the number lower in high school. I like to, because that's where you're doing not only the mental health, but you're also doing the career in college. I mean, we are just getting ready to go there, so I appreciate the trend, but I do think there are bigger questions when you see this.
I have a couple of questions. First, that was a great presentation, and I think it gave us like, ugh, a lot of the feels, and I was already feeling that because I was looking at the counselor, that was the counselor for all three of my children, and has been a part of our family's life for these three boys that are now men. And so, just when I saw you tonight, I felt like a little, ugh, but I also think that's part of the story when we talk about creating these relationships with counselors, right? It's making sure that they have the capacity to connect with their students and being able to support our counselors, because I think it's important that we want them to stay, right? It's important for our students to create that relationship. So I am thinking about, I want us to come back to this conversation about what those supports, I know a lot of it comes down to funding and positions, but I think we've also got to be really creative and think about, we're looking at these referrals, and they're getting bigger every year. The only way they're going to go and ask for help is if they have that relationship there and they feel safe, and so, I have a lot of, a lot of questions about that. Other questions I have are about Naviance. I love the way that I'm seeing Four Points using it, I love the way that I'm seeing Leander High School using it. When I talk to families about Naviance, sometimes they know all about it, and as their child is applying to college, they're like, "Yeah, we plugged up our Naviance, and we were in there, and, you know, it connects to Common App already and does all these things," but some students, some parents are like, "No, I just logged my kid in there, and there isn't anything in there," you know? Maybe there's some of the things that the counselor has put in there. And so, I'm wondering, is it by campus, is it campus choice, is it student choice? How are we using Naviance? Because I think it is an amazing tool that is existing, right, in Leander ISD, and so I am concerned that it's not being utilized effectively to support our students across all campuses.
That's an excellent question, and a question I've been asked before by Dr. Gearing. I think what we want to see is, when we had ProfCom as a required course, kids used Naviance in there, and then it trailed off, but that was their first entry point ever. What I think, what I believe will happen is because we're introducing it in our middle schools for the first time ever in the last two years, is that once we get the students engaged with it on a more day-to-day basis at the middle school level, you're going to see the usage increase over time in year to year. And so, I expect that next year, we'll see a jump in increase in our ninth and 10th grade numbers, and we can pull this data from Naviance, and it can tell you how many kids have logged in and how many times they've logged in, the average login. So I think it's going to stair-step up, and so, we're, I have a senior, and she agreed, does not use Naviance like I would want her to use it, but I hope my seventh grader will be able to use it more in a more purposeful way, because it is a wonderful tool, but we've got to train them, and honestly, I would take no credit for Naviance, other than paying the bill. Bethany does all the Naviance work, it sets up all the plans and the endorsements, it works with our campuses on that. So it's not necessarily campus choice, it's more about getting our younger kids involved in, at an earlier age. And then, we are, there's so many aspects of Naviance that we're not using.
That was my other question, is I'm excited to hear that more schools are going to use it, that we're growing it out, but then I'm also thinking about an earlier conversation we had today with another software application that does a lot of the same things that Naviance does, some different, some the same, but there's a lot of other tools in Naviance we aren't using. So I do have concerns that we start putting everyone on this path, we're encouraging everyone to start using this, but hold on, we're going to use this other software real soon, so don't get too invested. So I would like that to also be part of the conversation because I see some potential overlapping issues here, and I know as a parent, like, do not get me started all on using this software, I'm all excited about it, I've been nagging my kid to actually put their, you know, volunteer work in there, because if they use it well, I like literally, when you go fill out your Common App, you have your volunteer, you have your organizations, I mean, it's boom, it does a really good job, and I don't, I think it would be very frustrating if we have teachers start pushing, supporting students to do this, start encouraging parents to help their students, you know, because you can also log your out-of-campus information in there as well, and then we go down a different path. So just, Bruce, something for us to think through as well, so.
I do want to say our intention with Naviance is to do fewer things and do them well each year, and so, not to try to say do everything the first year and kind of not do them as intentionally and as well. So we want to, when we roll out, for example, parent accounts this year, we're going to wait until we know it's going to work, because nothing is more frustrating than sending out, "Go log into Naviance," and then we get 600 emails that it's not working, and so, we want to do everything and do it well.
I agree, but I know she's like shaking her head about, there's all these other tools that Naviance has, something that I'd love for us to consider is, as we're having coffee talks with parents and stuff, letting them know that that's there-
Agreed.
-and letting them know how to encourage your children. You need to log your community service, you need to log your volunteer, you need to log your athletics, you need to log every award and recognition you've ever gotten, because if they start doing that now, it makes like that whole college application process so much, so much easier and different for our families.
And I know you're trying to get out here, so, but I just want to say one, I looked at Christine, just one thing, because you mentioned something about, yeah, I just, you mentioned something about retaining our counselors, and I just want to say, we've had a few counselors that have gone on to other districts, and they've actually come back, and they said it's the support, and I'm not trying to brag on us, but I do want to brag on us, that the support that we provide and the systems we have in place brought them back to Leander, so.
I love that. Tanya, how long have you been with Leander ISD? 13 years. I love that. Thank you. Thank you for taking care of my kids.
Regarding the ratios, are there times when, or do you see a situation where you might have a counselor that goes between, say, two campuses because of the need? So you have one fixed there, but maybe one floating between campuses because they're not quite yet at that second counselor level, but they still have those needs?
Yeah, we've had that in the past. I believe when I came here in 2016, we had .5 counselors that would share between, I want to say Komodo Baghdad, I can't remember the other two, Reed and another campus, and they would go back and forth. I think it works, I think it's, my preference is to have someone full-time on a campus, if possible, but also, I'd rather have a .5 as opposed to zero. Yes, agreed.
So, working in the mental health field and knowing what is needed for our young people and our young adults, I feel like this is a perfect opportunity, after the presentation that we saw tonight, and the feedback that you've gotten from parents, and the obvious connection you've made with kids, is that there's a lot of talk about getting back to the basics and getting back to a traditional schooling, and teach my kids math and reading, but don't talk to them about feelings. This is why we do that. This is why it's important. This is why having counselors and social emotional lessons matter. And if we don't do this, and we don't care for our young people, they end up using substances, and they end up in trouble, and they end up destitute. And I'm really thankful that we do what we do, and I wish we had more people to do it, and I want to just say thank you.
I am going to piggyback off of Christine's comment, because this is a conversation that I've had with Mr. Clark many times, and that there are a few things more frustrating to me than the misinformation that gets spread about this department in particular. Speaking as a parent, the people in your department are part of the reason that I have a graduating senior this year. It matters. The work that you all do, it matters, and I hope that you know that you are seen and you are appreciated, and that this board has your backs, because you are the ones taking care of our kids, and you are the ones making sure that our kids get to walk those stages. And I just have to say thank you so, so much.
I have a question on slide 19. So when we're connecting interests to this campus visit, right, and I'm talking, we have a bunch of amazing programs at each different campuses, so one thing I'm thinking of in particular is we have cosmetology at LHS, right, culinary at Glenn. How does my kid who goes to Stiles going to be able to experience the program or have that campus visit, say, cosmetology at LHS, because it's in a different feeder pattern? Like, what are we doing to promote those programs that are specialized to those high school campuses and not waiting until that eighth grade visit? Because I'm going to be honest with you, I had no idea IB existed until that eighth grade visit, after we moved into the Ralph's feeder pattern. My child was like, "Hey, I want to do IB," and it wasn't until that eighth grade visit night that I, as a parent and my child, was aware of that path to take. So I'm wondering, what are we doing right now to ensure that those students not in those feeder pattern with those programs are getting that one information, we're giving the parents that information, and making sure they're aware of everything available to them?
I hope this satisfies your question, it may not, you can tell me if it's done good enough, but one thing that we are doing in CTEs in our department as well, and so, just as an example, CTE, and Bethany and I have gone out with them to meet with counselor feeder patterns, to share like changes in the CTE programming, but also, I'm thinking of our last meeting at Glenn High School, and we were talking about, okay, so how can we get kids into these, and just talking and brainstorming as a campus staff and as a district staff about how to get this information to students earlier. So I don't think I have a very satisfying answer for you, but do know that we're thinking of that as well, and so, the CTE staff, all four of them, plus Bethany, myself, are part of that discussion.
I think this is great material, I'm so thankful for it, and I feel like this needed to be focused for a reason. As Gloria said, this starts other questions, right? And so, something I hope that the board will encourage and that we will, that you will bring back to us. So I want to understand more about the partnering that's going on, because we don't have time to cover it all, but how are you partnering with teachers? We've talked about that before, right? What does that look like? And we've talked about trainings that you've been working on, and so, I'd love to hear more about that. But also, and I think really what I hear keep resonating throughout all the board members, is your partnership with pathway and innovation, and how is that working? We've talked before that, you know, sometimes it feels like we're in silos, but I'm not hearing it or seeing it, and so, it would be great to have more of that presentation of how are we partnering with them, how is that connecting? And I think I've heard Shaday talk about it, and I've heard our trustees appear talk about it, which is like, how are our students being aware of opportunities? Do they know, you know, what grade point do you need to get for, I think Shaday talked about the National Honor Society, and do our kids know, like, this opportunity is available for you to go? for you to go? And I think that's a, a great conversation to kind of maybe come back for both of y'all to talk about, how do we connect our kids to the opportunities that we're trying to provide for them?
And I think that goes along with them setting goals, for them to know what types of opportunities exist or what kinds of goals they can set. Maybe examples of goals, goal banks, this is high, medium, low goals and for you and things like that. So because they might not know and maybe people at home too don't know. So they, they're really relying on the counselor to provide that information.
What I hear all of you talking about, I'm making sure that students really know themselves well, understand what their interests are and know the opportunities that we have in the district that connect them to those interests and then are able to help them to develop those passions over time. So that is exactly the work that we're doing in the strategic plan. So we're building the human capacity to try to build those systems. I think what's important to understand is that there is too much information. We have forty three thousand, close to forty three thousand students across the district. If you talk to our high school teachers, they're dealing with a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy, sometimes more kids a day. Um, if you talk to these counselors, they're dealing with, you saw the ratios, somewhere between three and four, maybe even 500 students. Um, it's impossible for one adult to manage all of that. And so this is why we have this very strong push towards ownership of learning at the student level, trying to make sure that we find ways to take that onus off of the adults to prepare students for something and really getting these students to be able to help to prepare themselves for anything. We're going to need a tool at some point in time to help us to manage this process. And so that's what we started the conversation with today, to really try to bring you the thoughts of exactly this issue that we have of how do we start to put a system together that helps us to manage this more efficiently? And that makes sure that starting at fifth grade, we really are getting students thinking about what am I interested in? What are my potentials? And then what are these possible pathways that we have in the district? And how do I understand, to your question, if I'm in this feeder pattern, but that interest is not necessarily offered in my feeder pattern, how do I even know it exists somewhere else? And then if I know now that it exists, how do I connect to it? And at some point in time, the advocacy is going to have to come from the family, from that student. Because if they're not advocating for that, there's a good chance that we could miss it, right? That's just the reality of a large system like ours. And so that's why we're seeking some kind of a tool to help us in that process. And, and that's why we'll continue to bring back to this conversation of how do we find that right tool? How do we find these best ways? Remember that this is about making better human decisions though, right? And so it's always going to connect back to how do we use the tools and the technology to help us to make better human decisions?
I agree with almost all of that. One piece, um, that makes me a little, I'm a little concerned is I don't think we can always count on the parents to do it. Sometimes they're just not going to know. Sometimes they're not going to have the social capital and that's what all these counselors are gonna, I, and so yes, there's ownership of the student. Yes, there's parents being engaged, but to say, we're going to have to rely on the parent to do it, I don't want to just rely on the parent to do it. Cause sometimes a parent is not going, they're simply not going to know what's possible and what's out there. And they may not have the, the capital to be able to do that. And so yes, I want to empower our students and I want the information to be more accessible and, um, easier to get to. But I also think that's how we need to think about how we support these folks to be able to do that with those students. Um, and I do think it's empowering parents, you know, and showing parents that the resources are there, but I don't want to just rely on the parents to do it because I think that's how a lot of students will fall through the cracks if we do that.
Yeah, I appreciate that comment because clarity takes dialogue and dialogue takes time. And so what I said, what you heard about what I said was not what I intended for you to hear about what I said. This tool is intended to help them, right? To manage the four, 500 or 600 kids that they have to manage. Right now, the data that they need is in so many different places, it's impossible for them to pull all of that together. So how do we make it easier for them to have access to the data they need on each child? So that as they're meeting with that child, some of that, getting to know that child is shortcut by the tool that we're using. But it's shortcut to the extent that it just helps them to make a better human decision with that child. I don't, I don't think it, the owners still can't lie with them though. It doesn't have to be about them inviting the child in for a one-on-one to make sure that they're on track. It's about that child approaching the counselor to say, I'm seeing this in my tool and in my data, you know, what, what do you know that I don't know that can help me to, to deal with this issue? Now that, that's so much easier for you to deal with than it is for you to have to see it and then go after that. So yes, this is definitely an ongoing conversation that we have to have. But there have to be all of those pieces in. So I think it is really important for us to engage the parents and get them advocating because they know their children even better than we do. I think it's really, really important to get the child involved and we can do that from very early on. Um, you heard kindergartners tonight who already have agency and know what they want and, and are able to articulate that. Um, and it's powerful, right? And so if we start at that level, imagine what those kids are going to be able to do when they hit ninth grade or in that transition from eighth to ninth. Um, and how much that helps them as they're trying to help them through that. It means you start at a different foundation, then you can do so much more because you can launch from a different place, right? And so we need the students, we need the parents, but we also need our counselors, we need our teachers involved and we need to be able to give them as much information as possible.
At some point, I almost feel like it's a professional development conversation, our capacity building conversation for this board, because I think there is this, I need the vocabulary to be able to better talk about this because there's a place where we want our kids to know about opportunities and advocate for themselves, have that ownership of learning, but we also want to be able to tell them what opportunities there are because some might not have any idea. And so there is kind of this balance of give and take. There is sometimes this myth of knowledge that we think, oh, well, of course they'll advocate for it if they need it. Maybe they don't know to advocate for it, right? How do we, and these are like conversations that get really bogged down. And so what I like to not do is spend a lot of time like being like ships passing, like crossing each other. I like to try to empower this board to have capacity and vocabulary to be able, we're talking about agency of learning, our ownership, and we're talking about though empowering our staff to be able to provide opportunities. Where are the balances and where are the levers so that we can really talk about that?
Absolutely.
If, if you would just indulge me 10 seconds, I just want to say thank you for every of the kind words. We've had a pretty tough 24 hours in supporting a campus and it's, to, to hear you say those things, it, it helped us a lot today, but it's been a tough 24 hours.
Thank you. Thank you all for everything that you do. We appreciate you. Thank you. Next. I love that they're, look how many of our, our staff is here, empowered staff. Thank you so much. Right? Next item on the agenda is six A3. This is a discussion of our 2025, 2026 academic calendar planning.
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees, Dr. Gearing. Um, I fully expect that type of applause when I'm done talking about the academic calendar. Kimberly already told me you guys are not going to clap for me, so it's fine, it's fine. All right. So I'm going to talk to you guys th- this evening about, um, the 25, 26 academic calendar development. Um, we are very early in the process, so want to give you a high level overview of that. And then also allow you an opportunity to provide some input to me, um, as I'm working in on a listening tour right now. Um, so just to kind of give you a quick snapshot before we move forward, um, the process is very similar to what it has been in the past. Um, right now we are in the active, um, stages of researching all of the things. So the statutes, making sure we deeply understand the attributes of the calendar, um, and the guidelines that we need to be following. And also other district calendars, um, Austin Community College, UT, all of those different calendars. So we're gathering everything that we can possibly right now. Um, we are also, um, working through input gathering and then we plan to bring you in January, two calendars, one for final approval for 25, 26, and then a tentative approval for the following school year. So this is a real quick visual of the listening tour we're going to take. And even as of yesterday, I've already added like three in my head that aren't up here. Um, cause we're trying to be responsive to what we're out hearing. So we actually completed that whole top row already. Um, we are making sure we include stakeholders like students. Um, SISAC is probably one of my favorite groups to go visit. They're going to get sick of me after a while. Um, and then also we've, we're working on campus administration. We've met with assistant principals. We'll see principals December 3rd. Um, we sent out our community survey already. It'll be open until December 3rd and I checked the results on that yesterday and we are at almost a thousand respondents already. So that is super exciting and I had a hard time not already digging into the data to see what it's telling me, but I'm trying to wait. Um, we went to Shack last week and then we did a community listening session virtually last week and we'll do one in person starting next week. Um, a couple of the things that I'll kind of note about things that I've added is when we were at Shack, we were having conversations about making sure that we are providing every possible modality, um, so that families who can't come to in person are able to give input. Maybe a family wanted to come to the Zoom, but they couldn't. Um, and so we are trying to make sure that we ramp up that community survey, um, as we go out, um, go, go in through the year. So December 3rd is the cutoff. We'll continue to push the survey, um, in partnership with, with school community relations, but we're talking about doing printouts and giving them to campuses and asking to actually hand out paper, um, input surveys, those types of things, just trying to think of different ways to make sure that everybody has a voice in this process. Um, we have a few more dates planned and then, um, like I said, at the January 9th, we'll come back with a recommendation for you after we've worked through all of that data. All right. And I kind of talked to you about this already. These are the community stakeholders. Um, another thing I got excited about last night as I was looking at the survey is we have business members, we have community members, um, that are also providing us feedback on what they feel is best for the academic calendar. So wide representation here. So this is probably not an unfamiliar slide for you all, but I'll very quickly touch on it. These are our statutory guidelines that we need to make sure are incorporated in our academic calendar. Hundred and eighty-seven days for teacher workdays, um, versus the hundred and seventy-two that we need for students. So that's a question that I'm hearing a lot in listening sessions is why do we have all of these teacher professional development days? So having to explain the difference between the required days for students and then the contract days for teachers. Um, you all are familiar with the seventy-five, 600 required minutes. And then we always make sure that we pad those minutes, um, to ensure that we have opportunities for bad weather. I know your next agenda item is about Vandergrift and so having those minutes built into the calendar is helpful when unexpected things happen throughout the year. Um, we are District of Innovation, which allows our district to have flexibility with its start date and that's in line with the Texas Education Code listed here. Um, we do not have school on Memorial Day. That is a House bill to make sure that we don't do that. And I did talk about those bad weather days. So here is our current calendar. So I want to point out just a couple of things for you. Um, you will see in the month of August, that purple circle, that's the Wednesday start date, um, that we always have, like I just mentioned, the District of Innovation, it allows us to start that, um, start date a little sooner. And then the purple down in May is that last day. It is the Friday before Memorial Day. Um, the yellow circles that you see, those are our teacher professional development days that compensate for the 172 up to the 187. Um, and one thing I'll point out, we talked about this about two years ago, uh, the board had requested that we ensure that if you look at the month of August from the 5th to the 13th, that at least two of those days are protected for teacher preparation and not taken for teacher, um, professional development. And so that is something we are still staying consistent with and propose that we continue to do that. Um, and then let's see, um, the parent teacher conference day, this one has come up and has been an interesting conversation. So last year, Dr. Benz brought to you that we were going to push the parent teacher conference day to October to give, uh, teachers more time, a little early in the year. Didn't have all of the data back. Um, in my listening sessions, you have to remember it's very early still, hearing a little bit of tug and pull on that topic. What's better, September or what's better, October? And so one of the things that I'm considering is sending out some one question surveys just to elementary sta- uh, teaching staff and asking some feedback and getting a little bit of a scenario one, scenario two, what do we think is best? That shouldn't impact what day we do professional development on, it would just be a flip flop. So we're going to look a little bit further into that. All right. And then one last piece is that early release. You see early releases on the last, uh, day of each semester. So one in December and one in May. And this is a really quick, kind of everything I just said, I wanted you to be able to see the visual calendar, um, as I was talking through these things. Um, fall break, winter break, one full week, starting on Mondays is, um, very highly favored so far in the feedback that we've been getting. Um, and then that spring break, we have to make sure that we align spring break with ACC. We're pretty sure at this point that we're good here. Um, I don't have a published calendar for ACC yet. Um, UT does have theirs published and it is aligned with a tentatively approved calendar, but we're going to just double check and make sure that that is aligned like we think. Cause we all know we, we do to our students who are enrolled in ACC, we need to make sure we stay consistent there. And there is those instructional minutes I discussed with you guys already. Elementary and middle do have 435 minutes per day with high school at 440 and the, um, doing the calculations for this school year, those are our total minutes. Um, we did have to dip into those a little bit just for the Vandergrift feeder pattern, which I know we'll talk about here in the next agenda item. All right. And here is that tentative calendar you all have, um, last year tentatively approved. This does have our first school day as August 13th, um, with a short first week. And then last, um, school day of the year is May 22nd, right before Memorial Day, very consistent with our calendars in the past. Oops, I hit the button too much. Okay. So this is, um, just a little bit of a high level overview and what I would like to solicit some feedback from you all tonight about, and this is, um, more features of that calendar. So preserving those two dedicated teacher workdays, as I mentioned, between August 4th and August 12th, making sure that at least two of those are just workdays for teachers. Um, that parent teacher conference right now is designated for the 13th. I kind of already talked about whether we may or may not switch it. If we did, it would be September 22nd. Um, continuous improvement conference, um, we just finished that. It would stay consistent and overlap with election day. Um, and then those early release days, December 19th and May 22nd would remain consistent with those built-in professional learning times. Um, last year, Dr. Benz did mention this to you all and I want to mention to you one more time because I think it's going to be a topic for discussion. If you'll notice March, and if you look at the 13th. So that is a little different than years past. This has the professional development day, the Friday before the break instead of the Monday after we return. And so it kind of depends, I'm getting mixed feedback on this. Um, I'd love to hear if you have any thoughts on that, um, about with families, it might make more sense because if you move it to that Monday after, you get three, four day weeks in a row. Um, with teachers, that feels good to have that Monday after because I can come back, plan and prepare, reset and be ready for my students on Tuesday. So it's a little bit of a 50/50 mix right now, but something I'm listening, um, really closely for. Um, so that is something that we could kind of play with. And with that, I'll open it up for any questions or discussions you might have. And just so you know, I'm shivering because I'm cold. Not because I'm scared. I don't know if you can tell, but I'm freezing.
All right. But this is, all looks great to me and I have no other comments on that, so.
I'm curious if, one thing that I see a lot on social media, I'm curious if it has come up in your conversations at all, is people are talking about having different holidays for different cultures, incorporating more holidays for other cultures and religions. Is that something that has come up in your conversations at all?
It has come up a lot. So one of the things that I've done is pulled the, um, just the list of all the national holidays, religious holidays, everything possible. We have that already ready. Um, and just kind of trying to overlay and overlap, some of the things that I've gotten comments on are, well, Round Rock does it this way. So that's going to be a part of our kind of comparative study we do with other cal- um, calendars too, is if we have a district that's been making it work, let's figure out what they're doing as well. Um, it is difficult. It's hard. It's hard. And then the amount of days that we have set in, some of the conversations have been about adding things here or providing the U days that Round Rock was doing, like the mental wellness days, that some of those things have implications. We might have to extend a school year, go past Memorial Day, those types of things, and those are all maybes. So those are kind of the responses at this point, but we do have all of that information gathered so we can figure out if there's something we can try to accommodate.
I do want to add though, because I was actually reading about this, in last legislative session, House Bill 1212, basically prohibits districts from requiring students to provide documentation for religious holidays, so only a parent can provide a note, and it'll be an excused note. So if you participate in that religious holiday, you can be excused. So yeah.
And that is, that's one thing that keeps coming up too, is a lot of the families that are asking for this accommodation are aware that we excuse it, they just don't want their children to miss school. And so that's what we're hearing a lot is, some of those are some of the conversations we're having.
I was, as I was looking at the dates, I was thinking about exactly what Trish just asked, and you know, the last presentation we had about, you know, languages in our district, we know that we have a high percentage of South Asian families, and we do this, we have our parent conference and grading day in October. It's October 13th, and Diwali is on October 20th. And so I just wonder if there's times where we can, you know, where we have that date set in October already, if, you know, is that something that we could move to the following Monday so that families are that, are observing Diwali, you know, makes it, makes it work?
That's exactly where my head was last night when I was looking at it, is, and the connection I made was when I was actually looking at, one of the messages that came through on the thought exchange was about a religious holiday and how Round Rocks made it work. When I went and looked at theirs, that's exactly what they were doing is, how do we overlay this with like a teacher development day, something along those lines? So, yes.
No other questions at this time. Well, thank you very much. All right, we're going to move, oh, there you go. All right, see what y'all did. Now, everybody's gonna want, everyone's gonna want to get claps all night long. Okay, so our next one is Item 6C2, which is Discussion of the Vandergrift High School Feeder Pattern Road Closure on Friday, October 18th, 2024, and Monday, October 21st, 2024.
We have a team here tonight to talk through the VHS feeder pattern road closures that led to a school closure in October. So the purpose is to report our actions that we took during this event, our lesson learned, and actions we're taking to improve the outcomes. Hopefully, this doesn't happen again, but should it, we are ready to improve how we respond. And you know, something about this feeder pattern, as many of you have experienced, if you have driven in the area or you live in the area, there are not many alternate routes. And so when this happened on Friday, October the 18th, at about 11:30 a.m., we had a construction crew that struck an eight-inch gas line. This resulted in a significant gas leak that immediately impacted traffic in the area. There is a ton of traffic on a regular day, and so this posed increased traffic. And so this was in the Steiner Ranch community, 2222 and 620, and those surrounding streets were immediately impacted by this, and our school buses that were already en route at 12:30 were already experiencing significant delays.
Okay, so our initial response actually started as a district at 12:45. That's when we first got the initial report of the gas leak and also of the fact that it was already impacting the traffic within our feeder pattern. At that time, that's when we started the discussions as a district, and of course, we knew that there was three vital things that we needed to address immediately. Number one was student accountability. We knew that this was going to in fact impact the release hour for schools and also going to impact the fact that student accountability was going to be the utmost important thing. So we started to, to really plan how that, that was going to look, being that we're not only talking about the students that are commuting on, on the buses, but also those parents that commute to get the, the students at the school. Number two was transportation. We started talking about how is that going to look for transportation? At the time, we already had buses en route. However, we knew we needed to start also working on a plan for the release time and how that was going to impact. And number three was a communication, communication with the agencies that responded to the gas leak. It was so important for us to establish communication with the agencies that you can see up here, to have factual information that we could go by to make the decisions that needed to be made. I do want to say that Lake Travis Office of Emergency Management was extremely responsive. They were able to give us information not only on Friday, but that communication also followed on Saturday and onto Sunday as well.
One of the important things that we want to note, and so we're starting our additional information on student accountability, student safety, accounting for our students and ensuring that they're where they are supposed to be is top priority. And so we are proud to share that during this, at all times, every student was accounted for, including those waiting on the campuses. We had daycare buses that were not able to get to campuses, we had parents that were not able to get to campuses, they were stuck in the traffic as well. And so we had lots of campuses that, that held students for many hours after until they could be safely picked up by a family member. And so campus administrators, they're on another slide, but they acted immediately and they effectively navigated the challenges to ensure that all of our students were safe, and they were in action until the last student was safe leaving their campus.
So as has been talked about quite a bit already, buses started leaving early. As soon as we found out about it, we were like, hey, we've got to start getting down to that area because we don't know exactly how long it's going to take. So we knew we needed to get, get there even if we had to sit on the campuses early. With that communication, obviously, big shout-out for our nurses that were on those campuses to be able to be proactive with our student needs for the students that still needed transportation for that day. As Kimberly talked about, we had quite a few campuses that were proactive also with getting parents there to pick up those students and being very in front of what that messaging looked like. We just still had students that needed to ride the, the bus that had medical conditions, and so we were able to send, or those nurses were able to send some of those medications and some of those things that we didn't know exactly how long it would take. Overall, the route times were 45 hours on top of what they normally are. So some of those students or the last students were actually being dropped off right around nine o'clock that evening. And through all this, you know, no one really stopped to think about, hey, where's the student going to go on a restroom on a bus? We don't have charter buses that have restrooms. These are yellow school buses, so yellow school buses are expensive to begin with, and if we tried to put restrooms on them, I don't know what that would look like right now. But overall, so bus drivers had to use their best judgment with that. So we had several parents call because we had school buses in Target parking lot. Target was gracious enough to open up their doors and let our students go to the restroom. And so then they had to get back into the traffic to be able to do that, but obviously, transportation and the routing department and dispatch was in constant communication with these buses during that time. Parents were able to see where their students were thanks to SmartTag. If they were able to log in or if they logged into that process, then they were able to follow where those students were. Part of what we learned through this though was that SmartTag has to have a time that we give information out. So typically, a SmartTag notification will say, hey, your bus will arrive in 15 minutes. We didn't know when the bus was going to arrive. It may only move five feet in 15 minutes through this situation, so we relied on reminders more to be able to give those updates out to the parents rather than those SmartTag communication or notifications that would normally go out.
All right. We knew we had to rely on some consistent and ongoing real-time communication. Communication takes place both on the backend and the frontend, and there was an unorthodox way of how we learned about this incident in the first place, which emanated from a campus principal, and then we were able to collaborate as a crisis team to be able to communicate effectively. So once we found out what the situation was, typically, we would hear something like that coming from emergency services or, or some other avenue, but again, coming from a campus principal, not typically the way that you would expect a communication of a catastrophe that large to start, but that's kind of where we started. Once we found out that we would have to communicate through, to the entire Vandergrift community, we got a communication out as quickly as possible and gave updates as, throughout the day from that initial, initial communication. After that second communication, that just sort of gave an update of where we were, the status of, of what our campuses were, looked like, we empowered our campus leaders to communicate about what was going to happen to their campus with any sort of Friday night activities. We knew that there were things that were happening on a Friday night, and we just allowed our campus leaders to take that and handle that appropriately. And then, as many things happened, there was a confluence of, of things that were happening that made us realize that this situation was deteriorating and deteriorating very quickly. So we were getting backend communication from our campus leaders about students that were still awaiting pickup, and, and then, as we were hearing that those last bit of students were being picked up, we also learned that the traffic delays and the road closure was going to last even longer, well into the night. And then on top of that, we received word that we still have 162 students that have not arrived home. So quickly went into, we got to get communication out there. This is, this is a lot for, for parents to handle on top of an already, already emotional experience with the amount of traffic that was happening in the area. So we began to give timely updates throughout the evening until the very last student was dropped off. Throughout the weekend, we just continued to monitor, monitor the situation. However, we were hearing that throughout the day and throughout the weekend, eventually the road would open. And then going into Sunday, we just felt, after communicating in the morning that our situation might not change much, we called a three o'clock meeting of district leadership to decide what to do next. We felt like after what we had experienced on Friday, we were going to put students at great risk if we continue to try to put them on the road regardless of whether or not the road was going to be open or not. It just didn't feel like we could trust the information that we were getting. So that's when we decided to close schools for that Monday. We communicated Sunday evening through an urgent message which overrided, overrode all notification preferences to ensure that every household was reached. And then by Monday, we were able to notice very quickly in the morning that the road was beginning to open, that allowed the schools to hold extracurricular activities, and then later assure the community that campus would resume on Tuesday. Just to point out again, as, as Brandon had mentioned, communication was, was key throughout it all, particularly on that Friday, and that reassurance that bus drivers were available to talk to parents in need, many of these, some of these students were students with disabilities and special needs, medical needs, and we had some really gracious bus drivers that were able to compassionately compare for, care for students and, and do whatever it would take in order to ensure no medical catastrophe was going to happen.
So there's a few challenges, obviously, that we faced. Information flow, as Christina just talked about, we're not usually tasked with items that we don't have information or we're not right there being able to get that information. So this was new for, for me, and I think a lot of the team that was not able to be right there and get that firsthand information right there. So information flow, even though it was coming in, was still difficult for us to be able to get in a timely way to also make those changes. Plus, we couldn't get there. We didn't have anyone on scene, we had no point of contact right there on the scene to be able to navigate that either. Resources and support, you know, there was challenges for us to get our, our buses down there, different people we would normally send to different resources or, or different areas for those schools that needed it, and we just couldn't do it. We couldn't put more people on the road, and we couldn't get there in a timely way. And then the biggest thing, I mean, there was an emotional impact on our students. Received phone calls from APD and then also LPD of parents calling in and concerned about their students, obviously, for being on the bus. They wanted to know if they could drive up and pick up their students right off the bus, right on 620, and so we had to talk through that. Several calls came into the transportation department specifically on, hey, if I can get to my kid. We actually were able to unload some of those students once we were able to get to a safe area to be able to drop those students for those parents, specifically ones with medical needs. And so there was many different situations, and, and ultimately, when you're, when you can't help, it, it makes the situation a little tougher. So those were just some of the major challenges that we faced.
On October 25th, which was a Friday, as with any incident, we did hold an after-action review. At a district level, we invited all of the administrators from the campuses that were affected, and obviously, as with any incident, there's always lessons learned. Of course, one of them was the need for enhanced resource coordination, which we're already working on. As a matter of fact, we do have an Austin Police Department meeting that we will be attending for specifically this, to, to make sure that we have that communication with APD and how is it that we can collaborate so that we, when things like this happen, especially in the area and traffic, we have a better source of communication with those agencies. Also, protocols, our development, we need to enhance the protocols that we already have in place. As it was previously mentioned, there was a lot of emotional impact and stress to our students and our families, so it is important that we continue to develop those protocols that we have in place so that they align to the needs of our students. And of course, overall, always enhancing and, and continue to work on our preparedness. One thing that I'm very proud of this year, we've already started to do tabletop exercises. For example, we had one with the City of Leander. We are now in the works with Lake Travis OEM as well to do the same thing, make sure that we have those tabletop exercises that we're able to talk to through these type of incidents so that we're better prepared if something like this were to impact the community again.
And of course, I think every time we go through an incident like this, I think it's worthwhile to acknowledge and celebrate some, some amazing things that we saw. I think the, the, the feat of these 30-some bus drivers was heroic on that day. We received so much, just from the heart, just their genuine care from these students. So earlier this week, we were able to drop off some treats, and they had a, a nice little party to just, just to show our appreciation for, for what they did during that day, but just to hear from those bus drivers themselves who were like, we don't need any of this, this is just what we would do any day, day in, day out. Our hearts are at the, our students are at the heart of whatever we do. But I also do want to take the time to acknowledge Mr. Kenneth, who at Canyon Ridge picked up an additional five bus routes? I think it did an additional five bus routes for other bus drivers who could not make it into Steiner Ranch, and so continued to make route after route, just taking students home because he was one of the only bus drivers that could. That's humility exemplified to the nth degree. I also want to acknowledge Kristi DeVille, who works at Central and was able to dispatch and just hang in there with her folks and just, just through her texts and her chats, just you could tell that the students were on her heart. She had just true compassion just pouring out of every pore. It was really a beautiful thing to witness, just how much she cared about making sure every student made it home. I also want to acknowledge our campus principals, who really, once they heard about what was happening, were poised in a very coordinated effort to make sure that parents could move responsibly and make responsible decisions about how their children were going to be picked up. And just really, without panic or alert or anxiety, were able to just execute with a cool, calm head. I just want to acknowledge their support and their care throughout this process as well. And also, just our community, just in general. We received, for as much of a harrowing experience as that was, our community really reached out and showed their support for what we did that day. And again, I just also want to acknowledge this team. I think that when you're on that back channel and you're reading all these things coming in and you really have no idea of what's going to happen next, in a situation that was very unpredictable, I really appreciate how professional this team was and to be able to execute with excellence. So with that, do you have any questions?
Have a couple of questions. First, thank you all for that. I mean, I think that a lot of folks didn't understand how bad it really was. You know, Trish and I both lived down there, and we had friends calling us because they were concerned. And I think the school had encouraged students who don't normally ride the bus to ride the bus, because they said, tell your parents not to come, get on the bus. So we had a lot of kids that didn't have a SmartTag, never logged into SmartTag. So they weren't getting that communication. They're on the bus, they're texting, they're scrolling, they don't know how long this is going to be. This is kind of fun, until it's not fun, and then your phone dies, and then it's really not fun, right? I, you know, a friend asked me to go, if I could tell her where their bus was. So I was like, yeah, I'll drive down there and see. I drove from River Place to 2222. And I mean, I had to leave my car, and I walked to Target. People had gotten out of their vehicles, left them on 2222, and walked over to Target to use the restroom in HEB. And that's where I saw the bus, a lot of our buses, and getting water and restrooms. And so, I mean, it really was just cars parked in the middle of the road. There was a lot of students also, though, coming into River Place and then taking the emergency road on foot. When I say these students, because they run, and they're walkers and runners. But we do have that emergency road that was, it's not for cars to drive through. It was an emergency road that was made available during the, after the Steiner Ranch fires. And it's just for emergency, really for fire trucks. Fire trucks are supposed to be able to be on there. So I'm wondering if there's any opportunity for collaboration with Austin, with the city, so that in a situation like that, at least our buses, our buses would have been able to drive through River Place and use that emergency road, and they would be in Steiner immediately. And so, can you talk to us a little bit about that?
So that'll be a conversation with APD when we meet with him the first week of December to ask specifically, because I believe there was some kind of contact with APD, but that wasn't granted at the time. So we'll follow up to ask that question for you.
And I don't know, I mean, they say that a fire vehicle can ride on that road. Having seen that road, I don't know if I'd want to put a school bus on that road. But maybe that's something, you know, to talk through, and just having that as an option. But I really do commend the communication on Saturday and Sunday. I think people just wanted to know what's going to happen, what's going to happen, what are we going to do, you know? And a lot of families really appreciated knowing that, okay, we're okay on Monday. We're, you know, we're going to do this. Because they kept saying, it's going to be open Saturday morning at 6:00 a.m. And then it's like, okay, Saturday at 3:00 p.m., okay, Saturday at 8:00 p.m. And then, when that went into Sunday, we were all thinking like, oh my gosh, you know, we can't do this again. But I think for me, just thinking about, I appreciated all the communication. I appreciated that the SmartTag was working. But I just think recognizing that, how are we going to communicate with families that don't have a SmartTag? And in this situation, we encourage students that don't normally ride the bus to get on the bus, because their vehicle, you know, their parents couldn't get up there. And that just left a lot of parents not knowing where they were. So I think what I'd love in cases like that, I know there's a fear of, we're going to communicate to all the Vandergrift parents then, and now we're going to communicate to a bunch of people, it's 130 kids out there. But I just think that over-communication would be better than not, just because we had people we couldn't reach.
I think I totally went that direction once I realized that was happening. And that was very easy to see, that no matter what, if you know after four or five hours that your student hasn't been home, even if you were getting pinged with that information, wouldn't you want to know? And isn't this the only most effective way for me to get that information to you? Then I'm okay with that. And so, there were some decisions that just needed to happen on the fly. And I thank you for validating that, because it just felt like the most reasonable thing to do in that situation. Again, it was, it was, it just did, again, it just, it kind of upended on us because we just did not realize how late it was going to take, how late it was going to go into the evening.
Thank you, thank you. Y'all did a great job. Thank you, I appreciate y'all.
I would also like to take this quick opportunity to put a plug out there, that if you have not taken care of the Remind app, that is how we communicate during these emergency situations. And please double-check your settings. Sometimes, like in this situation, district is the one who's going to send that message. And so, in your settings, you have the opportunity to make sure that you can accept district messages as well as your campus messages. So just a plug there to make sure that you have access to all of the communication coming out.
Have a question about Remind. So I get new Reminds, right? So I get all the Reminds. So I get the Remind, but I think when y'all were adding some of the additions, was it being added to the previous Remind and not a new text? Because I think that's a problem, honestly, because I didn't know, I'm supposed to go back to that earlier Remind and click on the link, and I would know that there's an update in that previous Remind. I think in situations like that, you just need to push another Remind out. Because I know at one point, you said, I sent, there's an update on the Remind. And I thought, well, that's weird, I didn't get it. And I texted Trish, I said, did you get it? She was like, no, I didn't get it. But then we clicked on the link, and we could see that there was an update in the Remind text. But you have to actually go and get it. And I don't think that, I think you just need to throw in. I know people are going to say, oh my God, you're blowing up my phone, my kid's home. But I still think you gotta push the other text out, because I didn't know that I needed to go back and click on the link to see the update.
Thank you for that. Yeah, that's really, really good feedback. We, again, it was a quiet way that we can continue to keep the people informed with that timestamp smore inside there, so that folks could see regular updates without us having to do that blast, as I had mentioned. So, but I do feel like, as we noticed the situation change, that those Reminds that were going out more regularly helped folks realize that that would be the best way to get information.
Can I say, I really, I just, I don't think we can emphasize enough how much we appreciate our staff, bus drivers for being there. My husband was like, he was up there, and he said, yes, staff is still hanging out here because kiddos are still waiting for their parents to arrive to come get them, right? And for our bus drivers, there was a neighbor who said that when the bus driver was dropping off one of the kiddos, like at 9 o'clock at night, there was still smiles on the bus drivers' faces. Like, really? That was just amazing. So, love those stories. I, a couple of things, just as I'm thinking through kind of what that situation felt like. I can say, from 3:20 communication to the 7:00 one, it just, it felt really long. It just, it, because it's getting darker. And I can't see what's out there, although the maps, by the way, if you looked on Google, sometimes Google was telling you you could drive through something and you couldn't. I mean, it was just, it was a mess. So I'd love to see later, you know, how we could do that. And I'd also like to say, thank you, Gloria, because I was panicking. I was like, okay, what's going on? Where's this? What's that? Right? Because it's just, it's a moment that you're just, you don't have every day. And I think in some ways, I needed to blame something. And what I really want to blame is the person who hit the gas line, but I couldn't get them on the phone. So, that, I think, I think, you know, thank the staff, because as parents, we were dealing with trauma too. And for those groups of parents who were in Steiner fires, for me, it was pulling back some really weird memories of feeling trapped. And I did not enjoy that feeling. And I imagine some of the people had some of that connection. That being said, I would love for, as you are doing your after-action and you're doing your conversations, we've talked a long time ago about the emergency road to Vandergrift, but I think a better question, and a more, yeah, have that question. We want to hear updates on that. But what are we going to do about traffic flow and when emergencies happen? Because this area is notoriously known for not having great traffic or great roads. And so, then Gloria's talking about, well, what about this emergency road? I would like to know, how, what have we done? Have we learned something from here, and can we do something better with traffic flow and emergency? And can parents feel secure that we know y'all are going to get those emergency vehicles to the cars? I mean, I know you're working it out as administration, but it's also helpful to let parents know. And I have an odd question. The one thing I was wondering is, as buses were going, I was thinking, they're stuck in traffic. What if traffic just moved and let the buses through? There were just so many kids. And, you know, there are some places where you'll hear in other states that have certain laws, where you have to like, slow down when you pass a car, or a certain tow truck. Or there's certain types of vehicles that get designated status in certain types of situation. Is there something that's ever been talked about for school buses when they're in a situation like that? Is there something we can do or advocate for as trustees to get those buses moving with something like this?
I think you can advocate for, but they're not considered an emergency vehicle, so they would not allow them to move. I think that question was asked of APD, and that they literally said, absolutely not. So, but like I say, that's a broader conversation with APD to just ask. I've also reached out to DPS. I got a call back from the major today. So broader conversations are going to occur. And so, hopefully, we can partner and just kind of work through some of the angles that we have right now. But I think once we kind of partner up and get a better understanding of that area amongst the agencies, I think we'll be able to work something out that we can all agree on, as opposed to telling us no in an emergency.
I was wondering about that, and wondering if it was because of the nature of the emergency was a gas leak? And so, they just didn't want anybody in that area, because you don't want the bus to...
And that could have been it, too. They didn't know how fumes could ignite. There could have been something more to it, I'm not sure. But we were wanting to speak with the chief. So, and that'll happen at the 1st of December.
In the APD meeting, to go off of Trish's question, is there any difference between, with the buses that are carrying the students that have emergent medical needs? Is there any distinction?
No, there's not. No. They're not considered emergency vehicles at all, regardless of what they're carrying.
They did tell us, as we talked to APD and LPD, they did tell us if there was a student medical need on there, and there was immediate action that needed to be taken, that we should call 911. We could put lights on the buses.
I was suggesting this. I was just suggesting this.
But can we get some lights?
No, sir. Let me put that on the record, no, sir.
She ruins all my fun all the time.
I do think the Legislative Committee, though, should ask this question. Like, what do lawmakers think for our school buses and our kids and situations? And so, can you get us just some type of like, just a one-pager with this information so we can help explain this to our lawmakers, what happened?
I spoke to the county commissioner for that area. We discussed kind of what happened, and I'd love to follow up with you. And she also wants to meet with you, Shay, to see how she can help as well, Bridgette Shay. And so, she'd like to figure out, you know, how she could partner and help with some of that communication. Because that night, as y'all know, I called like, Chief of Police at APD, and the mayor, and the county commissioner, and stuff like that. And so, she wants to know how we can, you know, she wants to help and be a part of the conversation. And so, I just met with her the other day, and so she's like, yes, please introduce me. And I think she will be a great ally as well.
Gloria, thank you, too. I mean, just such a resource. No, I really appreciate it. I really appreciate it. It was, yeah, a situation nobody enjoyed. I am curious about the bad weather days. So what happens if cold weather comes in, like freezing weather, and the district ends up having to close down because we banked two days? Look, y'all are looking at each other like y'all already have an answer ready. I'm excited about this. That goes. So what are we going to do if we get off-sequence where we banked the days, but now this feeder pattern doesn't have the days? What's going to happen?
All right. So we actually, I'll jump in on that one. So we actually did look at that. We have enough minutes banked, where for elementary and middle, we still have one more day that we can close and safely still meet our minutes. At high school, we have multiple days still.
So we have one more day. So if we have a bad weather day, and we know that if the roads freeze, this is Texas. If you're somewhere else, you could drive, you can't here in Texas. So does that mean that there might be a potential thing where we're going to have to give one campus more minutes? Have y'all got that far in the discussion than others, or...
So we have not yet, but definitely looking at the what-ifs as we are preparing for the winter season.
Thank you. Thank you for all that information. Thank you for the debrief. Appreciate it. Okay, we're not going to do that every meeting. Okay, all right. Christine Mauer is asking that we finish it out that way for her last meeting. So everybody gets, you know, Pete, you might get a standing ovation. So next item on the agenda is six, I'm sorry, 6C3, purchasing cooperative fees and no report.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Gearing. Just one comment before we begin. I appreciate everybody getting applause when they finished their reports. But when you get to my status, you get it before you give your report. So you guys already cheered me on. I appreciate that, setting that example for everybody else there, okay? No, never. And then, one thing I do want to point out, trustee Christine, you have no idea how hard I had to fight to be the last item that you guys approved on your last board meeting. Okay, it was, it was tough. I did, we, I did arm wrestle. It was tough. I think I pulled something, but... All right, but on to business. I appreciate the opportunity we have here tonight. Per Texas Education Code, Section 44.0331, each year, districts are supposed to provide a report to their governing body for any fees that are associated with inter-local agreements and/or purchasing co-op. And so, we have two of our purchasing co-ops that we are members of that have fees. So one is the Central Texas Purchasing Alliance, and that is a flat fee, $150 for the year. And then, we also have a Texas Association of School Boards has a ByBoard, a purchasing co-op, which is one of the more popular ones across the state. And this one doesn't have a fee per se to be a member of the co-op, but there is a fee associated when you buy vehicles. So when you buy a vehicle, a white fleet vehicle, it's about $400 per vehicle. When you buy a school bus, that's $800 per bus, and it's per PO. And it's per PO. So if we were to buy twenty school buses, we would have them on one PO. So it's just a flat eight hundred dollar fee. Uh, so we did put on there the amounts, uh, that was done. So it was, I don't know, if we were like, missing a part of our bus and they gave us a discount or something? How it came to sixty-three, ninety, you know, ninety-nine and ninety-eight cents? And that a flat sixty-four hundred for eight buses, I'll never understand. But that was the, when we ran the report, that was the number that it gave us. And so just wanted to be able to report that to be in compliance with, uh, but Texas Education Code forty-four dot zero three three one. Do you have any questions?
You can move on. Oops, you can move on to the next item whenever you're ready. You can just finish us out.
Just finish you out? All right. All right, so the next item we have is the cash flow, uh, report for the first quarter, for the months of July, August, and September. Uh, just real quick, this is the first one for this year. But Becky Garcia has kind of revamped this whole report, uh, and very customized it. Has our TEA overpayments. It has our recapture payments on here and, and separate. But we are on target with our, uh, with our cash flow. Nothing out of the ordinary on this report. So if there are any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer those. Or if not, I would go on to the month report. We get there? All right. Uh, the month reports are, are standard month reports. Uh, there are, there aren't anything on the report, uh, that I would say it's out of the ordinary. There is one item I just want to bring to your attention. Each month when we close out the month on function thirty-five, which is mainly food, but is also, that's the whole function that food service is under. So you will notice on that function right now, it shows it being over function. Every now and then, we occasionally do not get this entry done before we close out the month. So when we do our on behalf report, which books the revenue in one nine nine and then the expense, it puts it in thirty-five and one nine nine. And we have to manually journal that out over to fund two forty. So that's why it shows it's over. It's just the entry hasn't been done before the month was closed. So we will get that one and the next one for the next time. So it, it's, it's happened once or twice, but typically we get that entry done before. Uh, on to the next item is the, uh, monthly investment report. Just real briefly, at our monthly investment report, uh, just earned just under nine hundred thousand in interest on, uh, general fund. And in the two capital projects fund, we earned approximately six hundred thousand between the two of those. Is there a bond report in here? Okay, did I dismiss it? Okay. Uh, bond report, again, we have the reports for two thousand seven, two thousand seventeen, twenty-one, and twenty-three. Uh, nothing out of the ordinary on any of those reports. I want to bring to the attention of the board. But so if we have any questions on those, we'd be more than happy to answer those. And then on the monthly tax collection report, uh, ninety-nine point three five percent, uh, when you add in delinquent, it decreases to ninety-nine point two seven percent. Uh, we had about three hundred and fifty-four thousand negative in, uh, delinquent due to, uh, refunds. But those, most of those refunds are actually reimbursed through TEA through a separate submission. Uh, the prior year was ninety-nine point six eight percent. So nothing, uh, we're, we're, well within what we normally are. So nothing out of the ordinary on that report. But if there are any questions on any of the reports, we'd be more than happy to answer those.
No questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
He, he didn't want one. He, he said no. All right. It is, I'm thinking the same thing, Bruce. What if, it was a Christine Mauer last meeting thing. We did not, yes, yes. And now it is done. We're, we're, that, we did not start that. It is ten twenty-six PM and the board will now go into closed session for the purposes permitted by Texas Government Codes five-five-one point zero seven one, consultation with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation and/or attorney-client privilege matter, Texas Government Code five-five-one point zero seven four, deliberation regarding resignations, terminations, employment, reassignments, duties, and evaluation of personnel and public officers. Texas Government Code five-five-one point zero eight two one, deliberation whereby matter, regarding matters whereby personally identifiable information regarding one or more students will be disclosed. Texas Government Code five-five-one point zero seven four, deliberation and consideration of employment of chief human resources officer. No action will be taken in closed session. Any action related to closed session agenda items will be taken when the board returns to open session.